I think we have a quorum, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting order at 8:02. So Maureen, if you would be so kind as to call the roll, please.
Sure thing. Angelita Pena?
Here.
Patrick Brown?
Here.
Let me answer the door, hold on. Lyle Jepson?
Present.
Tammy Colby? Tammy's here, yes.
I'm having trouble with my computer at the moment, so I'm here, I apologize.
Thank you. Kim Gleason?
Here.
Jennifer Samuelson? I see her. Jennifer?
Hey, good morning.
Morning. Jenna O'Farrell?
Here.
Mom Lovett?
Here.
Gabrielle Lucci?
Here.
And Cherylson?
Present.
Secretary French, sorry.
Okay, good morning, everyone is here, so first, are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, well, we will proceed to item B, public to be heard, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? Okay, I'm not hearing any, although we're a little early, so what we will do is we'll...
Hi.
Yes?
Hi, this is Paul Forlenda, and can I just talk to you for two minutes?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, thanks. I'm Paul Forlenda, I serve on the Lincoln Select Board, and I'm also the Select Board Liaison to the State Community Schools Group. This is the group that's been advocating for Lincoln's withdrawal from the Mount Ave Union School District. And we voted in August by 70% to withdraw, and the other four towns in the district voted March 1st, a town meeting, to withdraw also by about 70%. So I just wanted to confirm that you've got the election certification from the district clerk, and ask, secondly, that if your schedule allows, you invite us to come before you at the April, your April 20th meeting.
Yes, thank you for the inquiry, so I believe the process is, the flow of information goes to the secretary, and then the secretary notifies the board. There's a key, a key point, though, it's a technical piece, but it is important. There's a 30-day, there's a 30-day period where citizens have the right to petition for a revote. So I, the practice typically is, is to wait for that 30-day period to lapse, so I think the, you know, the clock is running on that as we speak. But I think it's fair to say that April 20th would, our regular meeting in April would be a good time to begin the discussion. And I think what we'll do in the meantime is, we'll wanna, obviously, as I think you know, there, there is legislation that is actively being considered right now in the General Assembly, so we're already, under current law, the waters are a bit murky, and we've certainly had a number of challenges working through the existing law. The proposed legislation will provide a much-needed clarity in a number of respects, and I do know that there is a specific provision that would apply to the circumstances of, of Lincoln. So we can certainly begin that conversation in April, but my caution would be that the ground may be shifting under us as we're, as we're moving forward, so hopefully that helps address your question.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I guess the Senate is gonna take up that bill, once the House passes it, because the Education Committee has passed it. So, sounds like we should get back in touch with you April 1st, or a couple of days after.
Yeah, so definitely, over the next, over the next few weeks, and we'll, we'll, we'll work out a plan to best accommodate your, your, your request. So...
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
No problem, excellent, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board at this time? Okay. Hearing none, I'll move on to agenda item C. And we'll, I'll return back to item B up until 8:20, just in case there are any other members of the public who have joined us. But in the interest of picking up time, we'll move on to item C, which is to review and approve the minutes of the February 16th and March 9th state board meetings. So with that, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved by Jennifer Samuelson to approve the February 16th and March 9th, 2022 meeting minutes, is there a second to the motion?
The second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Brown, is there any discussion? Ms. Gleason?
Thanks, Oliver. Um, I just, and I know our minutes aren't transcripts, so I don't think it necessarily requires a change. There's reference from the March 9th meeting to the comment I made regarding the rules being inconsistent with the handling of out-of-state tuition. And I, my comment was more extensive to address the concerns regarding the civil rights of students in terms of the use of out-of-state tuition, and our role as a potential contracting body in the version of 219 as proposed. And so the minutes are very brief in just capturing the first portion of my comments. I don't have proposed language to change that as much as I want to ensure that this body has an opportunity to have that conversation.
So, so Kim, I, I really hate to cut you off, but I just, I wanna be very, I just wanna caution the board on S219. S219 addresses a number of things, a number of topics that under, are under active litigation, to which the board is party to, so I, we've been, I would just caution the board that we should be very careful and narrow our comments on some of those matters.
Yeah, I don't think that this is one of those, and that we, I think we have a responsibility collectively, and that, that is what I said in the minutes, so, or in the, for the record, so I can, I can let the minutes go as they are, I just, I do think that keeping to the narrow lane of our role in proposed legislation, this body should have a conversation about any concerns we have, or seek legal opinion if we think it's appropriate regarding the proposed legislation and our role in it.
Are there any other comments on the minutes, discussion? Okay. With that, all those in favor of adopting the motion, please say yes and raise your hand?
Yes.
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 Okay, all those opposed, please say no and raise your hand? Are there any abstentions? Okay, motion appears to carry unanimously, the motion does carry unanimously, and you've adopted the minutes of February 16th and March 9th. So at this time, I'll just do a, a chalk back in on item B, public to be heard, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? Okay, not hearing any for the moment, we'll return back, so with that, that brings us to item D, board announcements, are there any board announcements? Jennifer?
Hi, so just two quick updates, the first is with regard to the Rule 7000 series. Just to let you know, those rules did become final on February 25th, after we had our Elkar meeting, Donna Russo Savage and I had an Elkar meeting, or meeting before Elkar, on February 10th. So those amendments to the Rule 7000 series are now final. And then the other thing is that the paperwork for amendments to the Rule 2200 series was completed yesterday, I believe, and Emily Simmons submitted the paperwork both to the Secretary of State and to Elkar. So I anticipate that the hearing on the amendments to the 2200 series should be coming up, hopefully shortly.
Excellent. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other board announcements? Okay. Any other members of the public who wish to address the board? Okay, not hearing any, student report, item E, so Angelita and Gabrielle?
Hello, everyone, so I'm just gonna cover some small new things, and then just emphasize some things that I've talked about a lot, which probably gets, you guys get a little sick of hearing, but I think you've probably heard it from other students, and Gabrielle and me, and I think because of that, it's very important. So, new thing, we don't have to wear masks in school anymore, which is amazing. It has definitely been a very positive environment about it, we were a little worried that people would be criticized about wearing masks, but it's kind of a silly concern, considering that very few people are, and the people that are, you know, everyone's respecting that. And there is still a tiny bit of worry about COVID, but I think, for the most part, we are not necessarily back to normal, but making really big steps in doing that, and I think a heavy weight has kind of been lifted off of our shoulders. And it is a little weird, because some of us don't really recognize each other, and especially a lot of the teachers that I've had, I've never seen their face before, so it's a little weird being in the classroom, and people are like, who are, who are you? And I'm like, oh, I'm, I'm the girl that, you know, I have to kind of reference myself, and some way they recognize me. And then, of course, our voices, but there's that, which has been an incredibly positive thing for my school at least, and I'm sure many other schools. Just being able to see each other's faces is really great, and it, it's, it's just been a really nice thing. It doesn't feel like COVID did happen, but it, it also feels like it didn't, so it's just a nice bounce back. And then the other thing I'm gonna reference again is, I'm gonna talk again about student mental health, not, I'm not gonna get specific, but I'm sure you guys have heard it a lot from your own kids, and from past student representatives. And I'd like to emphasize, the reason why I keep bringing it up, and the reason why you heard it from Sabina, and I'm sure other students, is because it is very important, and the school system isn't perfect, it's not going to be. And I could rant about how I wish the school system was different, from testing, to the way they handle student behavior, to the way that I feel teachers should be trained with disabled kids that might be in school versus separated from society. I could go on that for hours, in fact, I could go on the entire meeting, but I'm not going to. And I'm just gonna say, I'm only bringing this up because I'm sure people think about it, but not enough. It is not thought thoroughly through, and the school, school can be so many different things, that probably can't right now, because money. Not every school has the same opportunities and chances, but I think that there could be a lot of change made that we have not thought of yet. I think that's very important to keep bringing up, because you hear, probably hear kids, your kids complain about testing and homework, but that complaining comes from a deep place, as a student that complains about homework and testing can definitely say I've had many sleepless nights, many breakdowns, and I've seen a lot of friends have breakdowns. And I think another thing is, there was just a student at a college that committed suicide, and we think it's because of the stress. And I think that's not really thought enough about, might think students are lazy and such, but you know, a lot of mental health goes undiagnosed, and we kind of have to live with that, we have to go through that until we can find it ourselves. And school can be made a lot easier, we just kind, kind of haven't figured that out. I always look to examples of European schools, I've seen a lot of schools that have shorter school days, or they have specialized schools, you know, some schools are specialized in educating in math, and then reading, and then science. And of course, we're not gonna make any drastic changes within the next year, that's not possible. We're probably not even gonna see it in our lifetime, but I think the more people hear this, and just even start thinking about it, we can come up with some pretty great ideas on how we can kind of change learning environment to be more accepting of different students, and not just the kids that can memorize and can sit still and take a test. And don't battle with, I'm sure a lot of students battle with mental health, but, I don't know. I feel like the learning environment can be much more diverse, and it's not, but, um, yeah, so I keep bringing it up. So it's just a little quick tidbit on my part, and that is my update. You'll probably hear me talk about this more in the future, but I'm sure you'll hear it from many students to come, not just me, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Angelita. Gabrielle, I know you had your Senate confirmation hearing today, or yesterday, for one, what, no, for last week, I'm sorry, I've got, I've got the days mixed up.
Yeah, um, do you like, want me to talk about that, or like?
Yeah, why don't you talk a little bit about that, and any, and that experience, and any, anything else you wanted to cover? And then Jenna, I saw, I'm sorry, I missed, I saw you had your hand up, so we'll come back to you.
All right, um, well, I had my Senate confirmation hearing last week, and I was definitely pretty nervous about it. I wasn't entirely sure about whether I could like, I don't know, I don't know, handle like, the stress of that, like, kind of last-minute situation, I guess, like, I didn't really expect that that was coming, so I was like, oh my gosh. But, you know, I think that they were all very, very nice people, and they definitely made me feel accommodated, and it was easy to talk to them about whatever questions they may have had for me. And, um, yeah, I mean, it was, it was short, but it was really enjoyable, so I think that's all I really have to say about that, unless there's anything like... No, okay. Um, as Angelita said before, we also don't have masks anymore, like, well, it's optional, that's like a, I don't, I don't, I think, I've heard it's a nationwide thing, that's kind of a terrifying thing for me. I'm definitely really nervous about it, I'm still one of the kids that wears a mask, because I, it's just something I'm still pretty concerned about. But I definitely think that kids are excited to have their masks off. A majority of the teachers and administration still have their masks on, but I've seen teachers that don't have it, and they seem very, very excited about it. Kids are seeing each other's faces often for the first time, and like, marveling about what they look like, or what they see. And I think kids are definitely really happy to return to this normal that we had pre-COVID. So I'm happy that kids and teachers are enjoying this new update that we've had to our schools. So I think that's all I have to say for my student report, thank you.
Well, I did, Gabrielle, I did have the opportunity to speak with Senator Campion, who's the Chair of Senate Education, and he sung your praises, and I was very impressed with your, your presentation before his committee, so congratulations on a, on a job well done. So Jenna, I believe you had a question for Angelita, and then Jennifer, and Lyle?
Just a quick comment, yeah, two years ago, when Kim and I joined the board, and going back to my memory here, Kim, I don't know if you remember, the first board meeting, we were doing an activity, and it was around the core values of us as board members and of the board, and one of the conversations was around excellence, and the student member at the time was Callahan Beck. And she spoke at length around mental health concerns, and that was two years ago, pre-pandemic, in terms of what schools expect for excellence, and how the definition of excellence sometimes is exactly what Angelita just said. And that students that fall outside of high honors, or have a great skill set in being a good learner, or memorizing, often don't get recognized for the excellence, or the struggles behind their, their accomplishments, or what they're able to achieve every single day. And, you know, in reflection, we're two years out with a whole bunch of other problems that have happened, and I will support any efforts Angelita, and Gabrielle, that you keep bringing forward around listening and supporting youth mental health supports in schools. So thank you for continuing to raise the conversation.
Excellent, thank you. Jennifer, and then Lyle, and then Kim?
Thank you, and thank you both for your updates, it's always one of the, the more lively aspects of our meetings, and I really appreciate the perspective that you guys both bring. Angelita, I wanted to sort of circle back, because you said on the one hand, you know, with regard to masks, it feels like the pandemic never happened, but then, as you're talking about mental health, I'm curious whether you're seeing increased concerns about mental health post-pandemic, like, do you think there's a connection? I know it's sort of always baseline there, but I'm wondering if you feel like it's been exacerbated or highlighted because of the pandemic? And then I have another question, but...
Okay, um, it, it has, I think it's a little disappointing that COVID is the reason why we're highlighting mental health. But it definitely has, just on a personal note, I submitted to have a therapist, and I have waited over a year because people started signing up to be in therapy. And so COVID definitely did kind of bring to light what goes on behind the scenes with students and even adults. So I guess it is like COVID did happen, COVID did have some benefits, it, it started this conversation of, well, people are staying at home, and the bad habits are coming out, and we, we need more therapy in everyday life. So it did, but it, it's kind of sad that this is the reason why we're talking about it, and we weren't talking about it before. So I hope that answered your question.
It does, and that kind of leads me to my next point, which is, you know, I always try to reframe this, like, for my own kids, about how there are gifts of COVID. There are good things that have come out of COVID, and, you know, this is an example of one of them, where, you know, now we're having these, you know, conversations about things that we should be talking about, so I think that is, you know, something to focus on. And my, my other point was, you had mentioned that, you know, you, plural, could have some great ideas about how to sort of change things to be better for students and their mental health. And so I don't know if that's a topic that we as a board should discuss, I'm sure Dan is on it with the agency, but I think, you know, having the student voice is a really important part of whatever discussions we're having and solutions that we're brainstorming.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Excellent. Lyle, Kim, and then Tom?
Yeah, well, thank you, and I just think it's real important that we have students on the board speaking, and that we are, you need to know we are listening. And it strikes me, as we just went through the roles and responsibilities subcommittee, to talk about what is the role, and what are the responsibilities of the Board of Education. And we've spent some, don't get me wrong when I say this next thing, we've spent some really great time talking about rules, and redefining what the rules look like, and talking about individual words, and what they all mean. I think in the future, it will be important for us to think more about the visioning part. Because what I heard Angelita just say is, school doesn't need to look like what it looks like right now. And it feels like we're just going, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, Angelita, and stop me, but I think I heard you say, it looks like we're going back to the way things were before as fast as we can. And where is the visioning, and where is the pause, and who's responsible for that? And I think my rhetorical question in my head, as I answer it, is, that could be us, and it could be us, as I look at, on the agenda, about the public engagement piece that we're gonna talk about. I think that's critical, and I think students need to be there, so, my comments, and thank you, Gabrielle, and thank you, Angelita.
Excellent, thank you. Kim, and then Tom?
Thank you, I, I wanna echo the appreciation for the advocacy and the persistence, and bringing this to our attention. Certainly, having had four kids go through our high schools, and, you know, mostly all through college, the resilience you need to build in addition to some of the collective memorization skills, which aren't necessarily learning. I'm not sure how well that ends up preparing one, but I certainly know, as those streams present themselves now, and in college, and otherwise in life, it is, this has brought to the attention matters that I think we need to figure out how to move the advocacy to action, and I would just love to offer whatever support. If our students want to see where to go next with this, or if it's appropriate, just connect on this topic, to see what project may be meaningful to you all, to see this move action, if that is helpful in any way. But, but just, most importantly, thank you both for sharing your experiences, and those of your classmates, and helping us to hear it every time. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you, Kim. Tom?
Yes, I'll just add my appreciation for your voice, and for your bringing this to our attention. I do wanna highlight a couple things that you said, because I think it's important for us to consider, and I suspect the secretary is, is working on this with his team, but the, the dearth of mental health professionals that are available to our young people, and how hard it is to access them in school, but also outside of school, and that opportunity is not universally distributed, or equally distributed throughout the state. So I think that's something to be, to be aware of, and I think people are aware of it. And as somebody who worked with Callahan on that, that definition of excellence, and that, that cultural piece, I think that we can, we can look to ways to recognize students other than scores and performance, performances, that there are kinds of excellence that our schools can, can recognize, I'd be really interested in hearing student voices on how, what that might look like, ways to recognize students for, for their particular strengths, and even if it's just resilience. I did just read an article about superintendents who have found those blessings of COVID. One is to take every opportunity in their cultures to create opportunities for joy. I'll take this opportunity to congratulate Gabrielle and the rest of Rutland High School for beating St. John's Bay Hilltoppers in the basketball tournament. But the, the amount of joy that were in the, in the stands at UVM during that time, it was so welcome, a breath of fresh air to actually celebrate something in cheer. And the second one was different instructional strategies. Superintendents throughout the country have found that project-based learning, and especially if you could do it outside, has been a huge boon to student mental health, and to differentiated learning, and celebrating different successes. So I just offer those reflections on your very good comments.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. Angelita?
Sorry, just a quick comment, I keep hearing conversation of definition of excellence, and from a student standpoint, that my school is not competitive, but my friend group certainly is. And I can define personally excellence as someone that receives higher than a 1300 on an SAT, and highest honors GPA. And that's painful, because I am not there, I struggle to get there, it is very hard, and I take very hard classes. So to be someone, and to be a... So to be someone and to be around people that also struggle with that, very difficult. And to have a family that struggled getting to that point, and it took them years to finally find success. You know, I have a family member, he's a programmer and he never finished college. And my mother finally found her passion after failing four years of college. And to me, that is excellence. Excellence is finding what you love to do and finding joy in it. And sadly, school doesn't allow that. I can see that. I have seen friends and peers exceed in classes that gives them the hands-on opportunities. Like, we have an economics class and the biggest part of the class is creating your own business and getting out in the school environment. And everyone's excited. Like, right now, they're selling cookies, they're selling ice pops, and that's part of the class. But right now, even if we define excellence in our heart a different way, society defines excellence as good grades, getting into a good college, and a high GPA. And as much as I don't agree with that, sadly, that is what I still strive to do, even if it hurts me and if it hurts others along the way. So, yeah, that was just my quick bit, just talking about excellence and such. And I thought, you know, a student perspective on, but I feel like it should be versus what it actually is. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Angelita. Patrick? Hope you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Angelita, you mentioned you had to wait almost a year for a therapy. And this could reach, potentially reach crisis proportions. And things need, even though there is a shortage of mental health professionals in the schools and in the community, this waiting time needs to be addressed because this could reach crisis proportions. The mental health, the suicide rate is extremely high, even though at times cause of that is not reported because of confidentiality, because of family privacy, but it is significantly high. And, you know, the board and their state needs to, it's a national crisis, the shortage of mental health professionals. And that's something that needs to be addressed because it's even more prevalent with diverse populations, with our immigrant and refugee communities. And so it's something not to be taken lightly, not to be just discussed and then, you know, deferred to some other time coming out of COVID. This is gonna, and it's gonna get increasingly urgent to address these issues. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. Excellent. Well, thank you both for your respective reports. And when we get to talking about sort of our future agenda and work plan, let's have a little bit more discussion about how we can perhaps tackle these in a future, some of the issues in a more substantial way in a future, future board meeting, or perhaps even at our, at our retreat as well. So if I forget, please, someone remind me when we get to those agenda items. So we're running a little ahead schedule. I did want to do, circle back briefly to item B, which is public to be heard, just in the event that there are any members of the public who were hoping to address the board, who may have missed that opportunity as we got ahead of schedule. So, any members of the public? Okay. Not hearing any, oh, yes. Maureen?
Yes, I just got an email from Richard Bland, so I'm going to respond and send the link to him. He's having trouble with it. And I'll let whoever else was just talking speak.
Yes, and as far as, because he's one of the, one of the self-selected representatives from Stowe. So I, those, the folks from Stowe, when we get to the Stowe agenda item, we'll, we'll allow them to address the board during that time. I think it'll be, that'll be more sensible. So are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board at this time?
I would like to.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, hello, thank you so much. My name is Amy Hornblasts, and I'm a health educator in Vermont. I've taught in a number of Vermont schools over the years. And I've been coming to the, your board, as well as other school boards, with concerns about the masks, of course, and all of the harms that we know, you know, that they can cause, and concerns about whether we're tracking those harms and things. And so, as you can imagine, I was incredibly relieved that, that the students are allowed to breathe now. The students and staff are allowed to breathe. There is nothing more important for our entire body's health, let alone our respiratory tract health, than to be able to breathe. You know, oxygen, release carbon dioxide, especially for our skin, having, not having a wet, moist, you know, bacteria-ridden cloth against our face all day. I'm really excited for how, what this is going to do to improve student health, as well as mental health. I was really encouraged by what the students were saying about mental health concerns and concerns about testing. Those are all my concerns as well. And I noticed that in an article, Secretary French mentioned, there was an article in Vermont Daily Chronicle, I think it was, about the 80% threshold. You know, students were told that if 80% of them got vaccinated, they would be allowed to take off the masks. And then, you know, that, that deal was sort of changed as time went on. And in the article, though, Secretary French mentioned that he was concerned too, that Vermont schools needed to immediately end steps that restrict student learning and development and do nothing to stop transmission, such as wearing masks outdoors, which, of course, we've known all along, has no effect. It's completely unnecessary. Yet, a lot of students are still choosing now, you know, to wear them outdoors. So I'm very concerned about the residual effects that some of these, you know, ineffective measures have had. So I'm wondering what the Agency of Education's next steps are going to be to, first of all, you know, assess what the effects of the mask, you know, were we doing practices that were completely ineffective? And as someone who's really worried about children developing things like OCD, you know, I've taught germs and health and hand washing for many, many years with many ages and many types of students. And you really have to be careful because kids can take it too far and they can become, you know, afraid of things they don't need to be, which can actually damage their health in the long run. So I would, I would love to see a full assessment of what strategies were used, school by school, classroom by classroom, because I hear it was sort of the Wild West, with teachers making their own rules, you know, within their own boundaries as to, you know, what spreads germs and what doesn't, and how we're going to protect ourselves. And so I'd really like to see a clearinghouse of what was used in different classrooms. I would also like to see not only a measuring of the effectiveness of our practices, but also what are the harms? You know, was it worth what we did and what harms were caused? And that's just a basic cost benefit analysis that we would do about, about anything, like say, student testing. You know, if we look at student testing, you know, what, what information is getting from all this student testing? And is it really valuable to the students in the long run? Versus, you know, weigh that benefit against the increased stress and interruption of learning and all of the other costs. You know, that's called a benefit cost analysis. And it's what we need to do with everything we do. And so what I'm going to be submitting to Secretary French today is a FOIA request to kind of get the ball rolling. I would like to see a list of all the data collection systems that schools and the Agency of Education and supervisory unions are using, just the names of the types of data collection systems that you've been using over the past five years and that you plan to use in the next year or two. Because I know that that ESSER funding is going to fund some new data collection systems. So I want to know what the names of those systems are and what types of information are entered into them, including school nurse data systems. So I'm not asking for any personal information, just what are the system titles and names and what are the types of information that are collected? And then I would like to, I'm going to start a research team that I hope will include youth who have been experiencing this, and elders who have been experiencing this, and, you know, all the folks who have been experiencing the masks, low-income workers, to examine that data and to request the data we feel would be most helpful. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. And I really appreciate your attention to this issue. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment. So this time, I think we'll move on to item F, which is an update on Chapter 11, which is now, has turned into a bill, H 727, which is on the notice calendar in the House and presumably will be up for a second reading tomorrow. So, Kim, if you would be so kind as to provide the board with an update on that one.
Sure. And is Donna on? I'm just still checking.
Yes, I am. I just got on, so I'm sorry. I didn't hear what the chair said.
No worries. He just, he just, he just introduced our, our update. I want to give it sort of a broad brush and then invite Donna to sort of point us to places that are still being worked on, but I think I'm gonna hit the high pieces. This bill now has, if you'll remember, is the big bill that is looking to update unified school districts, the law that pertains to those. And most of it is technical and most of it non-controversial. And then there's components to it that we have an interest especially in because it becomes our body of work to navigate situations where districts are seeking withdrawal. And that is where we came into this, by way of bringing a proposal forward that might address in a more thorough way the type of study that's required when a district unifies to put that lens on how a district might choose to withdraw. The pieces that are more controversial, of course, fall into that bucket. And there's those that are in transition that also have a separate session law piece. This has had an overview in House Gov Ops as well. And so there are some questions, I think, that they had regarding, I think, voting matters. And there, they will, I believe, today, if I'm getting it right here, from Will Sennings, on those matters. And then finally, there is a piece outstanding that I believe is going to be addressed when it gets to the Senate regarding the contractual relationship with educators when, when there is a withdrawal and how that changes. And Donna, if there, I'd love if you are willing to put any more meat on that that you think is appropriate and pieces that we want to pay close attention to. And I think just the other piece to acknowledge and appreciate is Donna's support and resources to the committee as they were doing this work. We brought forth a proposal that I think we could fairly say, with, certainly with Donna's work, with their alleged counsel. But I think now where it is, is no longer so much the state board's proposal in the work that's happened around withdrawal because it has departed from that. I think Donna has continued to be an amazing resource for the work that they're doing with a technical expertise that I think is unique in what she is able to bring to the work they're doing. She sees, she sees down the road the pitfalls of where we sit and offers improvements along the way. So, take it away, Donna.
Donna, are you on mute? If you're speaking, Donna, we can't hear you.
I, I just froze. Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you. Yes.
Okay. I've got a note that says I've got bad network quality, so I'm going to keep my camera off and hope that my, my video, I mean, my audio continues. I don't have a lot more to add. I'm happy to answer questions. A couple of the details are that the House Education, when they were addressing the withdrawal considerations, both in general for the future and also those provisions that will apply to the three ongoing actions. The areas of concern seems mostly to be for them, where it differed from what your proposals were, were whether or not the state board would have the last word. And if the state board doesn't feel as though a proposal is viable, whether the voters would still go forward and be able to vote to proceed. That, that, that was sort of the crux of it. Also, how much work will be, will be needed upfront? And whether or not there should be some guardrails at the beginning to make sure that, that people who, groups of people who wanted to withdraw didn't just suddenly start very easily taking advantage of the situation potentially and using a lot of resources when, when there's a lot of other work that needs to occur at the, at the supervisory union or at the district level. As far, so those are kind of the, probably the two pieces that are the most likely to be the subject of conversation and change, I would think, in the Senate. As far as the employment issue that was mentioned at the very end, we realized that as we were going along in this, that there were, there were special laws related to how do you transfer employees? How do you transition employees? If several districts are merging into a unified district or union, any kind of union school district, or if a couple of supervisory unions are merging into a single supervisory union. And the reason that's important is because a contractual relationship, whether it's an individual contractual relationship or whether it's a collectively bargained agreement, is between a group of people and an entity. And if that entity changes, then, then that no longer necessarily applies. So anyway, when, when, when the legislature, back in, actually back in 2010, I think, when the legislature first started thinking about wanting to encourage mergers, they adopted some language that dealt with it, dealt with the transition of employees if there's a merger. There's nothing currently in law for, for withdrawal. So, for example, in the Ripton situation, even if exactly the same teachers wanted to work in the same school in Ripton that they're, that they're working in as employees of the Union School District, there is not currently a contractual relationship that would follow, a contractual agreement that would follow them, which means that the Ripton School District would need to negotiate individually with each employee until those employees were hired and could form a negotiations council that could negotiate then for future collectively bargained agreements. So it's, it really adds another layer that I don't think anybody was thinking of at the time that a withdrawal was made. So I have been working with the same group of people who worked on the, the, the large Chapter 11 rewrite to try to draft some language that would deal with that. And it's, and it's, as you can imagine, it's very complicated, not because the words are complicated, but because there are so many different scenarios that could potentially occur and trying to think of every potential scenario and deal with it. So I sent that language out to the folks to review yesterday. And I'm hoping that it, you know, that something soon will meet with their approval. And then somebody, I'm not sure who, will, will present it to the Senate Education Committee to consider adding to the bill. So, sorry, that was longer than I intended.
No, I appreciate that, Donna, because I, you know, I, as the board may recall, this, we first got an inkling of this with the Ripton withdrawal last year, when, you know, the board started asking questions about what the plan was for the school and the teachers. And, and, you know, what, what we heard at the time was that the, you know, that the teachers, because they were under contract with the ACSD, were going to stay with the ACSD. And essentially, the new school board was getting a building with no, with no teachers, with no educators. So, yeah, that's where we started to get an inkling of this issue. And as some of these actions have moved, you know, have advanced forward and there have been more discussions, these are the types of complexities and challenges that have started to come out of the woodwork, which have very much been part of the discussion in House Education. All, just, you know, again, all the more reason why we need clarity in these statutes, because it's definitely pretty murky out there. I just, you know, I really want to thank both, you know, Kim and Donna for their, you know, work with the House Education Committee to try to get a proposal forward. It's not exactly what we proposed, but it certainly tracks in many ways. You know, the broad framework. I think there's some, certainly some improvements that the House Education. You know, the broad framework, uh, I think there's some, certainly some improvements that the House Education Committee made. There are probably s- uh, some areas where, um, you know, I, I would suggest we would, um, uh, will want to advocate in the Senate for, you know, for some, some changes. Um, so we'll have to, I have to see this thing through. But I think the, you know, one thing I think we, you know, the message needs to be really clear that, you know, Kim and I, um, have both been involved in this process and, and our proposal uh, and the discussions and, and our advocacy has, has really clearly been in the vein of ensuring that there is a path to, uh, withdrawal. There are, um, there are a number of good reasons, uh, depending on the circumstances at hand for a district to have a, a path for to withdraw from a unified district. You know, the, the meets and bounds of, of a community evolve over time. Um, the needs of, of unified districts change over the time. People may wish to realign with other districts and we need to have a good mechanism to allow for that. Um, so the, you know, the board is, is certainly, um, certainly supportive of that. And, and Kim and I have, have advocated for that, um, both going forward as well as with, um, the, uh, you know, the on, sort of the session law that deals with the ongoing issues. Um, but we want to make sure, again, back to Donna's comment around some of these employment contractual issues. We want to make sure that where there is withdrawal action, it's, it's a thoughtful one. And it ultimately results in success for the district and most importantly, the students served by that district. So, cool. Any questions, uh, or other comments on Chapter 11? Okay. With that, um, I think, uh, we're, we can move on to Item G, uh, which is the State Assessment Vendor RFP, um, update. So Dan, did you want to kind of tee this one up and then we'll bring in, uh, Tammy? And I see Wendy Gellers with us. I assume she may have, uh, a thing or two to say about this topic.
Yeah, yeah, please. Uh, thank you. Uh, good morning. Um. Yeah, in your packet you have, uh, a green sheet on an Item G, which is action, requested action on, uh, a new assessment vendor. This is essentially around Sback. Um, and the recommendation is to go with a new vendor Cognia. Uh, Secretary's recommendation is summarized there. And you might remember, we, um, the last meeting, uh, asked for appointment of a school one board member to, uh, become a little more involved in that as Tammy, and I'll invite her to say a few comments in a few minutes. Uh, but first point, essentially, uh, this is a requirement that we have, uh, these types of assessments. Uh, second point is, uh, we're required periodically to go out to bid, uh, under state procurement rules. Uh, so that process, um, has yielded, uh, this conclusion and recommendation. Um, we have discussed the concern that we, uh, had brought forward previously with the board around, um, if we were to change vendors, what does that mean for data continuity? We think we have that addressed. Um, and then I would just highlight, uh, the choice of this vendor in particular. I think, um, under the fiscal implication part of the green sheet, uh, it's, it's not really a financial decision. These, these assessments are funded by federal funds, what are called the CERA funds that are described briefly in the memo. But we believe this, uh, assessment will add, uh, some value, uh, significant greater value to, um, our experience, both from a time perspective and the overall quality of the assessments. Uh, so that, that was the consensus view of the team and pleased to bring forward that recommendation. Um, I think I'd invite Tammy just to make some comments and then, uh, open it up for questions on the board. And we do have, uh, agency staff available. They're not necessarily going to be, be making any additional presentation, but they are available to answer more detailed question. And that's, um, Doctors Wendy Geller and Amanda Goram. Uh, Dr. Geller is our head data person and, uh, Amanda Goram is our State Assessment Director.
Tammy?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, I had the opportunity to meet with, um, uh, Wendy and Amanda to talk a little bit about, um, both the green sheet and also sort of the, the history and the goals with the shift here. And just to be clear, um, this is a shift away from Sback, um, which is, um, currently our assessment protocol that we use in the state. And so I had a number of questions that I discussed with them and I thought maybe I would just share my questions and the answers I had. Um, and then of course, I'm sure there will be others on the part of the board. But you know, whenever we make this kind of shift, um, I think it's important to stand back and ask them. They sort of think about the big picture. And as Secretary French points out, assessment is a requirement. Um, it's not something we can sort of move, move away from entirely. But we do have some flexibility to think about how we go about doing that in the state. Um, and it was really, it was a really great conversation with Wendy and Amanda yesterday to hear a little bit more about sort of where the agency is going, sort of their perspective around assessment. So a couple, couple things that I is interested in learning more about and, and we'll share with you is, first one is, you know, whenever we move away from, you know, Sback originally was, was an assessment that was intended to be sort of a national assessment with comparability, um, and also continuity within a state, but also comparability across states. And one of the things I think we need to remember is that over time, uh, the ability to compare Sback across states is, is diminished, right? Because the Sback in and of itself has allowed, um, states to select different items and things along those lines. And so we, we are not in the same position as we might once then with respect to sort of comparability across states. Um, so it was one of the, one of the questions that I was curious about. Um, the Cognia, um, assessment pool, the, the item pool that they're used. We do have a number of other states that are using it, including Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New Mexico. Um, but you know what? The Cognia assessment allows us to do, and this I see as an opportunity with this contract, is allows the state to, um, select from the item pool and build up an assessment that is well aligned with our own values and our EQS. Um, and I'm going to come back to the values piece in a minute, and that was exciting to me. Rather than sort of having a real rigid set, we have some flexibility here and we did have some of that with Sback as well. With respect to transition, um, there is the opportunity to continue to use some of the Sback items. So this isn't a sort of a hard start to something new. Um, that was also one of my sort of comments and sort of questions I had for them. And then we know that, um, implementing Sback in the field has posed challenges, um, to our educators. And so I have a number of questions around that, which is, first of all, if we are going to build a new assessment, um, with a different item pool, to what extent will we have the ability to have educators be part of that? And have a voice in sort of the, the item pool and how that's developed? And the agency talked at length about developing a process of having stakeholder involvement, including educator involvement in that, and I found that very encouraging. Um, it also, we talked a lot about, um, the ability to bring, um, a new lens to items, uh, in particular around cultural competence and also thinking about accommodations for students with disabilities in the assessment, um, uh, activities. Right now, Sback does not do a very good job with respect to accommodations, um, for students with disabilities. So moving in this direction, I think, um, based on my conversation, seems like, uh, it offers an opportunity there as well. Um, one of the big things we've heard in the field around Sback is that there is some burden on educators for implementing it. Um, it is an adaptive test, requires, uh, you know, this is online. And, you know, this would continue to be an adaptive test online, right? There are some aspects of moving in this direction, um, that the agency shared with me that would reduce educator burden, which I think is certainly a welcome, um, development. But there are some, uh, there are some things that won't change, right? Which is, to the extent that, um, technology in the field, particularly broadband access, will continue to be a challenge. But that would be a challenge whether or not we were working with Sback or Cognia. Um, you know, that's, that's part of our general infrastructure. And then, um, a couple other, a couple, um, the last thing we talked a little bit about is, um, the opportunities when developing this new item pool is to think very carefully about how we align this again with the EQS and also the work of, that's going to be coming out of the Act One Commission. So just some, those were the kind of questions that I had, again, sort of more above the tree line and trying to think sort of big picture about what this shift might mean. Um, so I, obviously I'm sure other people will have other questions, but I hope that's helpful to the board in terms of the kind of conversation that I have with them. Secretary French, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I just, uh, would just underscore listening to you, uh, react to the process, um, how valuable it is to have your perspective. And, um, you know, as I mentioned, this is a state procurement process that brings certain, uh, limitations to, you know, how we go forward and negotiate contracts and so forth. But I think, you know, Tammy's questions, you get a sense of, you know, how valuable it is to have different lens sort of perspectives, if you will, looking at this issue, which is, it is a complex issue. So thank you for, uh, taking the time to do that.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer, then Kim.
Thanks. Um, I'm just curious from the student perspective, is there going to be any perceived change? The, how the test is, like, what it looks like, questions that are asked or anything of that nature?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to answer that. I'm sure there will. Um, I don't know, uh, be interesting, uh, to hear from either Gabrielle or Antolita about to what extent they would remember what the test looked like from the year before, so to speak. But, um, you know, I think, you know, this idea of an adaptive assessment is an important one. Um, you know, that the, the assessment sort of modifies itself based on the responses that our students are given. So there is some customization or individual, um, delivery going on in every session. So not every student sees the same kind of, of test. Uh, but I think, I think our students are fairly acclimated to the idea of adaptive assessment and computer-based assessment now in particular. I remember when we first rolled out Sback, that was a big part of the challenge was making that shift. Um, so I, I don't expect they'll experience a lot of discontinuity, if you will.
So does that mean, like, as a student is actually taking the test, depending on whether they get a question right or wrong, they'll get a different subsequent question to really sort of tease out, like, where they are on the, the spectrum of their learning?
That's the essential idea of an adaptive assessment. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's available through computer-based testing. Yeah.
All right. It's a long time since I've had to take a standardized test, so that's news to me. Yeah.
Awesome. Uh, Kim, and then Patrick.
Thank you. I think honestly, all the questions in my head, when I went through the materials ahead, Tammy hit on, and the, among them was in, in transitioning off of this, did we lose comparability to, I think, our peers? And in hitting that Cognia is being used in Massachusetts and New Hampshire, I think is helpful and important to understand. I think anytime there's transition, there's challenge in the field in, um, in delivering a, a transition. It just is. But if there's improved value in the, in the assessment, I think that that would be helpful. I think largely, and this is a personal bias. I find Sback to be a, um, a necessary evil, if you will, like, it's a requirement and it doesn't inform, instruct, you don't get results quickly enough for it to inform instruction. And so I guess my personal bias is that if assessment is not able to be adapting the instruction to improve instruction in a meaningful, timely fashion, it is a requirement, but I'm not sure that it's informing how that experience is going to be for that student in real time. Um, so I don't know if there's anything more to speak to about that because the timeliness of Sback has been problematic.
Yeah, and I would just, you know, if, if Oliver, it's okay, I'll just sort of jump in and try to field these a little bit. Um, you know, I don't, you know, locals get their aspect out of fairly quickly. So that, I mean, that's, that's a significant improvement compared to where we were, uh, with kneecap, for example. Um, the computer-based assessment does allow for more efficient scoring and so forth. But, uh, you know, to Tammy's point, um, you do have to kind of remember the history here and the political history around assessment to make sense of where, you know, what Sback is and how it functioned. And it's, it was a high-quality assessment, still is a high-quality assessment. But it's also important to acknowledge things have changed, both politically and from a tech, technology standpoint, and not just computer technology, but from assessment technology. Um, and it is important that we, uh, periodically kick the tires on this. And I, I look at it and to, to qualify Tammy's remarks, I do see this as an opportunity for us to not only advance the quality of assessment, uh, to make it more useful, uh, to, to the locals in their decision-making while at the same time satisfying our accountability needs at the state level.
Uh, Tammy, were you responding to Kim's question or did you have a comment? I just wanted, Patrick had his hand up first.
I, um, a little both. Um, just two other things that I was going to add that I, that we did talk about, I think addressed some of the comments that came up is, one, um, another thing that I discussed at length with, um, Wendy and Amanda was implementation plan. Um, and the contract itself has a lot of detail and a lot of support for implementing this in the field. I think that's really important because, um, you know, I, I'm not sure that we saw that same level of support with Sback. And so one of, and I know that this was a criteria that they used in evaluating contractors, it was around the implementation plan. The other thing I, I realized that I forgot to mention that I think is also an opportunity is that Cognia will also, will not just be English, Language Arts and Math, it would also be Science. So we will be all on the same sort of assessment platform for ELA, math and science, which I think is really a, a strong step forward as well. So I, I just wanted, I'm, thank you for letting me add that. I realized I forgot to mention that.
Uh, Patrick?
Yes, thank you. So, um, Secretary French with our Tammy. With our, um, increasingly shifting demographics, have you thought of translations? Or maybe that's something that you've done already?
Yeah, it's briefly mentioned in the green sheet, but, um, there's more opportunity, I think, uh, for accommodation and translation with this platform. Uh, so that's again, an advantage, I think, of just a regular cycle of going out onto the market and looking at, uh, new solutions because we'll, we'll be able to leverage, uh, those sort of upgrades, if you will, in the assessment technology. Um, another point I'd mentioned, just, it's kind of an interesting, the way Sback has developed. This is kind of a history lesson, my observation of it, that, you know, Sback is not a vendor per se. So the Sback, you contract with a separate vendor to deliver the Sback assessment. So there's multiple vendors out there who provide the Sback assessment. So when we, if we make a shift to Cognia, we're kind of getting the whole thing. It's like their assessment and their platform. So from my perspective, that, that also simplifies our ability to, uh, make tweaks, uh, to the process and gives us more ownership of the whole, whole system.
Hmm. Thank you.
So question for, um, uh, oh, and then sorry, Lyle, I'll see your hands up now too. Uh, so question, then I'll, I'll, I'll turn to Lyle. Um, well, question and a comment sort of wrapped together. So last, I think a year or two years ago, the board had quite a bit of discussion around the report card and some of the, some of the, some concerns that were raised around the report card and particularly around data suppression. So my recollection is that the data suppression logic is handled, um, at the sort of scorecard layer. And as, so that would not be addressed as part of, of this implementation because this is really purely based on the, um, uh, the, the assessment itself. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's still the case. And, and also just a, a comment, you know, when I was digging into that whole issue around the scorecard and I, I dug into the business requirements and the technical design and the testing. And, you know, my observation was that there, there were a number of elements of that implementation where there were a number of weaknesses, particularly around clarity of design. Um, expectations, um, specifically, I, I only honed in on some of the data suppression logic and, and there was a lot of sort of black box, lack of definition. Um, and consequently, you know, the testing was, was fairly, um, the test cases, uh, that I looked at were, were fairly weak. Um, so I just want to make sure that we have learned our lessons from that experience and that are, are looking to apply that i- i- uh, to, to this RFP process. Um, and then, you know, finally, as, as we're looking at implementing this new assessment tool, um, I, I guess the question for, for the secretary or Wendy is, you know, what implications does this have on our, our, our data model and the, our reporting capabilities, um, coming out of that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have Wendy answer that last one, but just to, uh, recap your questions. You're correct, this has nothing to do with suppression logic. This is, you know, the assessment vendor change, not really anything, uh, relative to the report card. Um, and as we've discussed at several board meetings, um, you, you, I, I would agree with your assessment of the project oversight, but that, that was a moment in time when ADS first came into being. That's, we've long since gone beyond, uh, our capacity relative to project management and oversight of these types of projects. So that's, that's not representative of the work we do now. Um, to a certain extent, we're still riding on what we inherited as a project and trying to make the best of it. Um, but we've made significant advancements under Wendy's leadership for, you know, a data vision for the agency in the state. So I'd invite Wendy to sort of take that, uh, intro and, and answer your last question if she'd be interested in doing so.
Sure. Um, just to make sure I, I heard, I'm picking up what you're throwing down. Uh, so what I heard you ask was how will a new, uh, vendor, uh, interface and/or we would ensure the means by which to ingest data seamlessly into the data model that we're building here? At AOE, did I pick, did I pick that up correctly?
You got it.
Solid. Um, so one of the things that we're really trying to do at the moment is to ensure that there are, um, in any RFP
in any RFP, any kind of infrastructural level work that's happening right now, that there's a means by which to ingest data through API. What API is, is it's that acronym stands for application programming interface. It's essentially a way to move data from one point securely to another point. So that was certainly part of the RFP process. Essentially, the agency is adopting the Common Education Data Standards data model. That is a federally established and fully extensible data model. What that means is that we are fully adopting the federal standards, best practices and infrastructural approach to ensure a sustainable and not going it alone posture moving forward in terms of the larger scale enterprise infrastructure at the agency. The fully extensible basically means that the model is capable of handling Vermont specific data elements. So if, you know, we had a piece of legislation that required the collection, management and use of a data element that for some reason, the, you know, at the federal level with required, required reporting, we're not currently required to collect. The the common standards model can be extended out to accommodate that new need. Additionally, we are thinking very hard and I'm very pleased with the progress to date on the, the long range thinking about how we can support our agency of digital services partners through federal technical assistance. So what I mean by that is by adopting, we call it SEDS for short. It's just easier to say than Common Education Data Standards. So by adopting the SEDS model, we're positioning ourselves to stand up the reporting data store that the the federal partners have developed, which will essentially handle the vast majority of the the largest volume of data that we're required to submit to the feds. That's called the EdFacts file submission process. It represents most of the common core of data. And so the generate platform is essentially going to sit on top of our reporting data environment or our, we'll just call it a reporting data store. It's going to essentially function like that. So the goal, and I'm, I'm very optimistic. I was very pleased with what I saw around the technical specifications. The goal with any new vendor is that they have to meet our standards. That we are not creating something that is bespoke, brittle, tough to manage, expensive to manage, not just in terms of dollars expensive to manage, but, you know, time is an elastic resource. So in terms of time and the skill or the expertise that it requires to manage that kind of infrastructure or those types of processes that are required to essentially sustain the the platforms and then how the platforms talk to one another. So this is kind of a long way of saying we are moving away as rapidly as we can from this historical, very brittle, very, very siloed, like point to point. Both infrastructure and approach to managing our, our data workflows, our data assets and moving to a posture where we have pipelines that move through the data lifecycle. So, yeah, we're really, we're moving away from understanding data collection, data platforms, data business processes, the work of doing data. We are moving away from a stance where we, in the past, approached things in a very, this one thing is to just do this one thing and we only consider it in and of its own self. It has to be considered as part of the ecosystem of the organization. So it's probably more than you wanted to know, but is that helpful?
So, well, a quick just follow up question where I'm going with this is, you know, the focus is on having a a data, a data lake, data warehouse, a good data store. Historically, we had this report card and that was sort of the way to get the data out into the public. But where I'm going with this is, you know, is there a vision that is going to allow for more open access to, you know, to essentially move some of that data suppression logic? Because data suppression is important as long as it's appropriately implemented. But to move that into the kind of the data layer and have that, that data be accessible through, let's say, a RESTful API where folks can, you know, write their own scripts to access the, the data with appropriate suppression built in and just bypass some of this UI that isn't particularly useful.
So that exists now.
Okay.
That exists now and has done since the Vermont Education Dashboard was launched. It was about 18 months ago, two years ago now. So, so, yeah, and, and, and I, and I offer that just because I'm conscious that folks just may not know where to look. And plus, we're doing a bunch of website redesign. So I'm just conscious that folks might not know like where things live. So we're currently on a quarterly release cycle. What that means for, for folks that might not be familiar is that essentially on a quarterly basis, we're pushing updates to our Power BI reporting platform. All of those data are fully exportable. They exist there now. Power BI is part of Microsoft stack. It's approved technology by ADS partners and it integrates fair, fairly seamlessly. I mean, you always kind of run into a few hiccups here and there, but it didn't, it's part of the Microsoft stack. So, you know, we're not kind of worried about, we're not kind of worried about, if you will, the the hookup issues between the back of the house places where we store data and work on data and then the front of the house places where we're reporting data outwards to the public. So the V E D, we call it the V E D for short. The V E D has already had suppression applied via our, our internal pipelines that push those products out to the web. And so, so the snapshot is not the only data visualization platform that exists at, at present. And we are, through those quarterly updates, we're either expanding out to new visualizations of publicly reportable data or we're adding data as they become available through the collection lifecycle. We do not currently have a statewide information system. So the timeliness of data submission is driven by the current ingestion cycle. And, and I don't know if we all want to get into that, that's like super in the weeds. But in the next year or two, we're going to be piloting an EdFi implementation. And I mentioned that because that was kind of the logical outcome of the request for information that we ran a couple of years ago now at the stage of the pandemic. Around what, what would it take for, for the state to implement a statewide information system? And, you know, we engaged our, our partners out in the LAAs on the ground really heavily on that. And we, you know, recommended to Secretary French and he approved our recommendation that now was not really the time for us to engage in a, in a project like that. And instead, we should pilot EdFi to see how well that does. And so since then, we've been working with other states who have already implemented this type of an approach and a solution. It's really, really a sustainable, really sustainable way to move forward by and large. And that's going to, all going well, that's going to reduce pretty significant burden on existing resources. So we're going to be redeploying those towards production of self service tools in the next 24 to 36 months.
Awesome.
I talked a lot, I see a lot of hands.
Nope, this is good. So Jenna, Lyle, Patrick, Kim.
Thanks. So my question was around, would the science, would the grade levels be the exact same as S back? Would we stick with the five, eight, 11 science and that the other grades for the regular testing? And then a second question is around what the administration of the assessment require in terms of classroom time?
Yeah, I mean, they're just, you know, we're getting into the broader issue and I think it's a great conversation. I really enjoy talking about the broader vision because I think it was lacking before. But just to focus in, this is a sort of, we're just plugging, plug and play one, one component of this vision. So it is important to acknowledge, as Tammy mentioned, that one advantage we're gaining here is we're putting science under the same roof under one vendor. We previously had separate vendors. But the requirements come from federal regulation. And then our Vermont's description of how we're going to comply with federal regulation is, is mentioned in our S estate plan and approved by the Fed. So in terms of grade levels, none of that changes per se. Your second question had to do with the actual experience of implementation. And that's where, again, you know, part of the urgency with having the board take action on this today is that we still have work to do negotiate with the vendor on a contract. But the contract would go live in July and this is going to take a considerable amount of time to ramp up that support for teachers to make that transition. So that's all part of the, the plan and the contract. But the actual, you know, we don't have, we have to build an assessment, as Tammy mentioned. That's part of what we're doing here is we're, we're pulling from a data bank, if you will, and involving people in designing that. So the direct answer to your question is really going to come later after we pull these pieces together. But I think it is important to acknowledge, you know, the, as the caller mentioned a few minutes ago, like everything we do needs to be evaluated from a sort of a total cost of ownership per se, but also how much time come away from instruction relative to assessment. Assessment is a critical tool in the, in the instructional process. And we have to maximize its efficiency and effectiveness as we, and build one. And we're going to have that opportunity to do that here. So I don't, the, the direct answer isn't certain yet.
Thank you. Lyle, Patrick, and then Kim.
Thank you.
I think mine has been answered. Thank you.
Dan, what's the AOE's expectation around the linking study and the timeline for that? And when would you expect that there could be reliable comparisons? I know the last thing you want to hear is, well, we can't give you that information because we changed vendors. So.
Well, I think, you know, it's first thing is, you know, don't have necessarily a direct answer to that. But we have this on our radar going into it. I, from my perspective, as a sort of an outsider to this process, when we've made these changes before, they've largely been due to federal policy changes. So I can think back in my time as principal when we had the NSRE, which was really our first experience, the national standard. National, I can remember what it stands for, reference, norm, standards, reference exam, I believe. And that was around 2000 when the goals 2000 came out. And then policy changed and required us to modify that to state based standards. So then we came into the kneecap, the New England Common Assessment Program. And then we shifted, as Tammy mentioned, to the sort of national comparative idea that there would be two major national assessments, the park and the S back. So every time we've made these changes, it was due to fundamental shifts in policy that really required us to measure different things. Like we, we shifted from this new standards reference project, which was like the inkling, this idea of having a common core kind of idea, to actually then being required to develop regional standards based or regional assessment based on individual state assessments, standards. So state of Vermont went through elaborate process, develop our own standards and then the grade level expectations to get more specificity on the standards. And then the policy shifted again to say, no, you're going to have to follow the common core. And now we're shifting again, sort of in a way that says, yeah, we'll work with the common core, but we have a little more flexibility as a state to design our own item bank and so forth. So the data continuity issues have been different each time. This time going into it, heads up, we're going to have the ability to, to address that issue. And it's sort of a extra insurance layer from, I'll use, I'll use that description, insurance. We've also become a meta metrics partner state. So we have the ability to leverage Lexile and Quantile scores. And that, that's part of a vision to also connect lots of other data, in particular, the local benchmark assessments that folks have. So we don't have the direct answer to that yet, but we're surfacing it now. We know it was a board's concern. We have some elements built into this on the linking study and also our partnership with meta metrics that should enable us to do more relative to those comparisons.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim.
I apologize if somehow this was answered in all of that. I think it wasn't though. I think I just have a question regarding longitudinal data in this transition and what that looks like. I know it's a difficult time to reflect back on the last two years and what that would even mean. But I think more broadly, how was that question considered or addressed?
Yeah, I think I'll throw this to the assessment team, but I will say I just remembered what the N stands for in NSRE. It's norm, our new standards, reference exam, excuse me. So we created new standards. I'd like to bring up Wendy, if it's okay, I'd like to have Amanda sort of jump in there. Because I don't, I don't think the boards met Amanda, perhaps maybe once or twice. But Amanda is fairly new to our staff. She's our state assessment director and maybe she'd like to give a few thoughts on this topic.
Sure thing.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's very nice to meet you all. This is my first time appearing in front of the board and it's a joy to be here. And so, you know, we've, through listening to folks out in the field and also just intuitively in our areas of expertise, have recognized the timing of this RFP process to be a real opportunity, considering the interruptions that we have had to data continuity and our ability to do longitudinal analysis. We did not have an assessment administration in 2020. And then the aggregate results of 2021 have new limitations that we've never experienced before. So on the one hand, we do recognize that if we were to ever sort of stop out of an assessment program and start new, this might actually be an opportune time. And we've also, you know, socially, over the past two and some odd years, felt called to take a critical look at the systems that we are, are affected by and moving through and think innovatively about how they are benefiting us and functioning for us. And, and especially when we think about all students in this case. And so with that, we felt like this was actually a pretty great opportunity, if there ever was a time to make a change. But we also understand that there is interest in comparing and looking back and seeing growth over time and things like that. And so we were really pleased to see that this particular vendor was actually the only vendor that addressed that question in their bid. And what they have proposed is that for the first year of implementation, which would be next school year, we will, under, under this proposal, we would administer our current smarter balanced items for ELA and math. And sort of a small section of their items, they would call it a field test section. And what that will allow them to do is do a linking study so that we can say a score of X on the new assessment is equivalent to a score of Y on the legacy assessment, which would be smarter balance, ELA or math. And so we have that ability. We also have intellectual property rights over many of our science assessment items, which is not smarter balance. It's a different development vendor. And so we do have potential to do this with science as well because we do own many of the items that our educators have worked so hard to review and develop. And so we do feel like there will be some amount of capacity to look at things longitudinally. Again, we have caveats with the past two years of data. But if we're, if we're smartly interpreting the results with, given those caveats, we should still be able to say things like, you know, a student scored such in 2022. The student scored this in 2023. And now we can talk about what that means over time. We should still have that ability.
Excellent. Thank you. So I think I'm going to bring this in the interest of time. I think we've had a great discussion here, probably time to bring this to a close. So Professor Colby, I'm hoping perhaps you might be willing to offer a, a motion to support the secretary's recommendation as stated in the green sheet.
Sure.
I'll give you a moment.
I don't have a written motion. Don't have that written, but I will, I'll, I'll do as I oftentimes do with motions. I will say I would, would like to make a motion that the board offer its support to the agency in doing, moving in this direction and its encouragement to, and to continue to engage with us around this process, particularly in the stakeholder process. So I'd like to make a motion that we take a vote to support and encourage going forward.
Excellent.
Do I have a second?
Oh, it's, Kim, are you seconding that? Yes, it's been seconded by Kim Gleason. Discussion, Secretary French.
Yeah, I would just also, just to pick up on the formal language in the recommendation, we are looking for authority to me to award the contract and possible extensions and so forth as described on the green sheet. So I just want to make that explicit that that's what we're looking for today to move forward.
Okay.
Can we do a friendly amendment?
I was just going to do that. I will friendly amend. I was just going to do that. I will friendly amend.
Restate your motion.
I will restate my motion. There you go. I move that the state board provide the agency the authority to move forward with the contract and any future amendments need to happen, and also encourage the agency to continue to work with the board as a stakeholder, as it engages in the process of rolling out the new, the new, this new contract and the assessments.
Okay.
I will second that same. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Is there any, any further discussion? Already, hearing none, all of, all those in favor of adopting the motion, please say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please say no and raise your hand. Are there any abstentions? It appears that the motion has been adopted unanimously. The motion has been adopted unanimously and is so adopted. Thank you very much for that. So, and thank you, Tammy, for your willingness to assist with this review. So with that, that brings us to item H, which is to have some further discussion on on our public engagement forums. We did have some preliminary discussion at our last regular meeting. Unfortunately, we were, we were pressed for time and so I wanted to make sure that we had some, some further discussion today on this. So Jenna and and Patrick, you, either one of you want to take the floor on this?
Okay, thank you, Chair Olson. Jenna, if you don't mind, I'll just start off. I continue, before I talk about the public engagement of the forums, I continue to try to engage our schools in coming to the board meetings and giving updates on challenges and successes with their DEI programs. And of course, everyone is so incredibly busy, but I think, but I know that CVU, Adam Bunting and his team are in the wings and they'll be coming to the next board meeting, hopefully. And and then there are others will invite them accordingly. As far as the public engagement forums, so Jenna and myself have been talking and emailing back and forth. And actually, she had proposed doing it all in one week. I counter-proposed spreading it over a month, but now I have to yield to her, because I think it makes more sense to get it done and be ready for presentation or discussion at the retreat in May. So, so we are ready and I think, as I think about it, there's some very pertinent and informative information out there that the board would benefit from. So it's a great strategy. It's a great thing that we're doing. I'm hearing from different communities, different settings, and especially now that we're starting to emerge from COVID. You know, quite some time ago, we talked about 21st century schools and 21st century education. All that has shifted a bit now with COVID and things are changing and continue to change. And so as we meet and we discuss all of the above, what better place to get information, to get public information than from a public forum? So we're continuing to work on the timing of this. But the logistics, we need a timekeeper, we need moderator, strong moderator, which I'll be moderating the Chittenden County piece. And I think other board members are going to be asked to do in their different jurisdictions. And so we'll support each other through this. But the big thing right now is the timeline. And I'll open it to you, board members, honorary, honorary board members, to hear from you. Unless Jenna wanted to jump in and say anything.
I think I was going to add that the last time we met, I think we got kind of clear on sense of purpose as a board, that why are we doing this? What, what information, you know, their listening sessions, that we're being informed by listening? And that information was going to come back to the board, full board at the retreat. It would help inform our vision moving forward. I don't think we got to a place of consensus on like, what are the questions? I mean, we proposed three questions. We need to kind of have more of a fuller discussion around like, what is the format and the dates? For the regions, I think, you know, we proposed an aggressive format, aggressive dates for March that have come and gone. Should we be looking at May? I don't, we didn't really land on any consensus points around dates for the regions or the questions that we should ask.
So let's, let's pick up the questions. I, I personally, I thought they were all great prompts. So I, I wouldn't suggest that we, personally, I wouldn't suggest that we deviate from the prompts that the two of you have suggested. But so I, other board members are, does anybody have a differing view on the prompts as suggested by Jenna and Patrick? And perhaps Jenna and Pat, Jenna, if you would maybe, just to refresh board members' memories, if you could just briefly skim through the three prompts.
Yep. One, what was your, what is your experience as educators, parents and students in regard to academic achievement throughout the pandemic? What concerns do you have? What recommendations do you have to offer? The second one was around student mental health. What have you experienced as educated parents, students in regard to the impact on the, of the pandemic on students' mental health? What concerns, recommendations? And the last was around lessons learned that have had a positive effect on educators and students during the pandemic. How will you integrate this information or strategies into your teaching and learning in the future?
Tammy?
Kristoff, yeah, thanks Jenna and Patrick for getting this going. This is really exciting. One of, one of the things, as I think about usefulness to to decision-making and the kind of conversation we may be having at our retreat, is I'm just really curious about what parents, students, teachers, community members see as not just the most pressing issues, but also opportunities, like where should we be going? Right? Like, the questions that we have, I think, are really important right now. They're reflective on the moment we've been in. I'm curious where people, sort of where people see or want the education system in Vermont going, right? Like, where are our opportunities, right? And I, I'm thinking about, you mentioned earlier around the board's role of visioning, right? Like, you know, I'd like some, I'd love to have some input on like, what that vision should look like? What are the priorities? Right? So I'd like to see a balance, both this retrospective moment of reflection, which I think is super important, but also sort of a prospective, right? Which is, you know, where should we be going? What are the opportunities? You know, what should the priorities be? Because especially coming out of COVID, there's just so much, right? Like, where should the priorities be? Where should we be focusing our, our, our attention? Where do we think we can get the most sort of purchase or leverage on the system to move it in that direction? So I don't know if that's maybe one other question that sort of shifts our focus forward would be great. I like all the reflective ones. I don't know if that's helpful.
I want to respond. I think the third question has components of what you said, and we can work the third question into more of a forward thinking.
Yes. And, and I was going to suggest, and then I'm going to come back to you, but I was going to suggest something similar. I think actually, what I was going to suggest is, on the third question, you could actually build that into the first two. So on the first two questions, you know, the lessons learned could be both positive and sort of, not to say negative, but positive and negative, right? What are the positive things that we've learned? What are some of the challenges that we've, we've, we've seen? And then re, restate question three to Tammy's point about what do we want it to look like in the future? Does that make sense? Kim?
Thank you. I think I was thinking similarly, or I was seeing it as almost two buckets. The retrospective look that might, because I think just an experience in having, you know, co-led or led these types of conversations, those first three questions are really connected. And people in it's offering their experiences through COVID are likely to do so in a lens that's either opportunity or challenge. And it might be that that is more free-flowing and not duplicative if it is sort of a bundle of things they might discuss around, you know, the retrospective. I think the mental health considerations and conversations benefits from its own intentional focus. So maybe it's really three buckets, sort of retrospective, like wins and losses or whatever. And that's a bad set of words for that, but you know what I mean, around the COVID experience in education. I think independently looking at mental health acknowledges this is not new to the COVID time. And it invites us, invites people to that conversation without the qualification of it being related to COVID. And then third, categorically, that idea that as we vision for education of the future, maybe having already prompted some thinking by the first two buckets, we're on the third bucket of a forward thinking. And then if we do another series of these in the fall or something, we can start to theme what we saw and, and probe a little further, particularly around visioning, if that's something that we're going to take on as a body with respect to our, our work together. Just an idea for how we bucket it.
Good thoughts. Jennifer?
Thanks. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the format. But is the idea that we're going to put these questions out as, you know, things for people to be thinking about and to then, you know, come speak at the forum, not necessarily on all three, not necessarily in order, but just really like looking at, you know, here are things that we're interested in and, you know, we're interested in your response on whichever part of whichever questions are resonating with you in the audience? Or are we really expecting people to go through like all three questions?
Jenna and Patrick, you want to?
Yes, I was just going to respond saying, each participant has three to five minutes and could never possible adequately address all of these in the, in the timeframe. And it depends on how many people are at each forum also, how many attendees we have. If there are less, then we could, a lot more time, but we also, but we have to, I think there will be a lot of, the response will be tremendous, if not overwhelming. Yeah, thank you.
Jenny, I had a good, good question in terms of, and I don't know the answer to this, like, how is this advertised, marketed? How are we going to invite people to this? And I think on the invitation probably has the questions, right? Like, that people know what they're, they're coming to talk about. But I don't know what that looks like and how that's worded. And then in terms of facilitation, that's a good question for us to talk about, right? Like, is it the facilitators asking one question, explaining kind of the agenda for the, the gathering? That we're going to have a series of three questions? Is it a free for all? Like, I, I think these are things that we need to talk about.
Um, Lyle and then Kim?
I think with the questions that, as they're framed, and just personally for me, I would love to know what people think education delivery should look like 10 years from now. So that when I walk into a school building, what am I seeing that's different than what's happening right now? And to me, that's our visioning exercise. When I go in the school, do I just see half the students there each day? And then the next day, it might be different kids because they're off doing experiential learning or whatever they're working on. So I guess I need to, I would love to come out of there knowing that we have some things to work on.
Kim, and then Tom.
A couple of thoughts, because this is such a great conversation. Can we do a Google form with the questions so that we could gather feedback that is accessible to people who can't be present for the time we've prescribed? That can be, I find and have found to be really, really helpful. And we could end up with hundreds of responses beyond those who can attend the time we've offered. So that's a thought. And I think for, if we were able to navigate it, I would find it more helpful to sort of break up the time that each of the questions are being considered. Because if somebody comes in with a scripted three to five minutes, they're not really necessarily listening and maybe reacting to what they're hearing. So I don't know if that's like even workable, but I guess if I were voting on which way to break down the work, I, I would love to see it be pocketed in the themes that we talked about with the questions. And, and maybe allow for shorter commentary, but it would invite more convers, I think more sort of dialogue among the participants in the, the here, I guess, the public hearing. And then finally, with facilitation, I hope we could sort of have, because each of us may have more or less experience in facilitating these sorts of things. And if we had sort of a script of how we want to introduce and sort of guidelines around how we do it, if not, you know, a 30-minute train-the-trainer maybe. So just some thoughts about how we find ourselves prepared to facilitate and, and draw value from the experience. But I also hope that we can do a form so people can engage with it at a time that works best for them.
Yeah, and, and I'm just on that point on the form, I think that's a good suggestion. Kim, there are some people who don't feel comfortable speaking in public, so this, it makes it accessible to them as well. Tom and then Patrick.
Yeah, just one, one comment. I think as far as the format goes, it makes great sense to me to have the two larger buckets of the retrospective and then the prospective. And to actually make that a clear transition in the, the forum, so that people know whether they're and in that way, I also think that we won't shortchange the, the learning loss of the academic experience in the, in the retrospective. So I, I think that at least those two make sense to me. And Kim's comments raised a question I had about whether this is in person, whether this is not in person, thinking about accessibility in the Northeast Kingdom, for example. Those, how this would actually look, and if it's not, if it is in person, where is the, where is the site location? So they're just questions, but one, that comment about splitting it into two parts, I think makes sense to me.
And I think our assumption all along, Tom, just to respond to the in-person, has been that it would be virtual. So we can talk about that more, but I see, Patrick, you've got your hand up and then perhaps Patrick and Jenna.
And so listening to Kim, my thought is to do it in two parts. So we start off with the written, the, the Google forms or whatever, and see what the response is. And that will eliminate a moderator, a timekeeper and all of the other logistical stuff. And then if there, which response to the written is overwhelming, we go with that and then think about the in-person or virtual for a, at a later date.
Ah, I like that idea. So, so in essence, you're suggesting let's roll out the written survey.
Right, yes.
See what kind of response, and that's going to provide an early indication of whether we're going to have two people show up or 200 people show up.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I, I like that, yeah. So does, do we feel, I guess Jenna, and I'll come to you here in a second, Kim, because I, we, I want to try to blend this thing here. So Jenna and Patrick, do you feel like you have a good sense of, from the board of what it's looking for in terms of, of the questions and the, and the general structure of how we want to approach this? We don't need to, we don't need to wordsmith everything at this point. I just want to make sure, do you guys feel like you've got clear direction from the board?
Yes, I do.
Good. I, I don't think so, but good. Okay. Did we just land it on a survey? That's, that's, just to be clear, right? Like, did we just land on a survey that now, in a survey, we're asking? in a survey, we're asking more than just two questions, right? Like, so.
Let me, let me, let me back up here. So I'll come back in a second. So my question was on the basic structure of a retrospective and a prospective component of how we want to handle this. I think that's my sense is that's where we've come to consensus. Then the next question is then, how do we actually facilitate this discussion? I think we're still all agree, we're going to do these public hearings, but there was a suggestion that we should also allow some written response. And then Patrick further modified that by suggesting we stage this. So we have, we put out the written questionnaire first. And then we, based on the volume of responses we get back from the written response, we can fine tune the structure of the public forums because we'll have a better sense of how much public response will have. That's sort of what I'm hearing. Jenna, I just, I want to make sure you're. Does that make, does that make sense to you?
That makes sense to me.
Okay. So Kim, Jennifer, Tammy. And you're on mute, Kim.
Yeah, it always takes forever for it to unclick, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose the question regarding mental health. And I don't know how best that would be posed, but I think thematically, that was the third theme. And I think it is, I think it's unique and distinct and not specific to COVID. So we've, we've talked about how important that is and how important our students' voices have been on that. So I hope that we'll keep that in there as a theme in our, in our survey. I love the idea of a survey engaging interest. I think it also may leave us the opportunity to facilitate smaller group discussions that would be really valuable in visioning work in the fall. To capture this data, theme this data, and then and then pivot a little to a different model, not hearing so much as maybe facilitated discussion where we can have smaller groups. And that is a bigger lift. I think it takes a different level of skill and and support, but I think that might be helpful in the visioning piece. So I'm I'm excited about getting some way out for people to interact with us sooner rather than later. And then, thank you.
So just on the mental health piece, I think what I was hearing is that that would be addressed in both of those buckets. So we it would be part of the retrospective, but also part of the prospective. So what are sort of the lessons learned in the retrospective? And then what do we want student mental health supports to look like 10 years from now to borrow from Lyle's suggestion? Okay. And then I think it was Jennifer and then Tammy and now Patrick.
Although, did Patrick have a response to Kim's point? I don't want to.
Well, I was just going to add, a final name, Mr. Chair. I've heard a couple of times, student mental health, mental health of teachers should also be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Good point.
So I guess I had two points to make. And one is, I hope that the the public forum that we're planning now is just, you know, one of what may continue on in the future. So you know, maybe the idea is we don't need to jam everything into this first one with the idea that there will be more. And I think this would be a good test run to see, you know, what resonates, what kind of feedback we get, and then where, you know, what future directions we want to take this. Because I think there's a lot of things that we could be discussing. So I think it could feel really overwhelming if we're trying to sort of throw everything into, you know, one public forum. And I think it might be more helpful to think about this as a series. And then the other thought with regard to sort of how to structure the time, you know, I keep putting myself in the you know, the position of someone who's coming to one of these and has something to say. And maybe I'm only drawn to respond to the first question and the third question, but not so much the second question. I don't know if we want to expect people to stay for, you know, all of questions one and two that are sort of lumped together and then have to reappear for question three, or if it makes sense to sort of go you know, by the person who might just identify that they're responding to question one and question three, say what they want to say and then either hang around because we're having a forum or, you know, get off if they need to get off. So I don't really have an answer for that, but I guess I'm not completely wedded to the idea of, you know, splitting it either.
Patrick, did you want to respond to that? Nope, you're on mute. Patrick, you're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. So what if we said, here are three questions. Choose one and respond to this and respond to the best of your ability, or choose one and respond to it. So they would be choosing one from three questions instead of trying to respond to all three.
Jenna? You're on mute.
I know. Um, we're kind of overthinking this. But we're like, this is, this is, this is getting way too complicated for what I think we, the purpose of what we really wanted to do. We wanted to listen. We wanted to get some good feedback. We wanted to offer a platform for people. I think we want to push out some sort of survey, which is fantastic, that can be really specific and people can offer personal, they can put whatever they want into that document. And then somehow all that information will be consolidated and the board will have it. I'm wondering, you know, it's complicated to pull off six listening sessions that are regionally like, and now we got like, is it better to say, you know, there's pick three, three dates maybe, and either like, I like the idea of a series and focus on three different topics. And there's three different, and they're statewide. I don't know. I mean, we can keep going with format here because we're just getting kind of in the weeds. And I think there's multiple paths. We just have to pick one at this point.
Tammy.
I know we're short on time, but I I'm going to just sort of build on your comments, Jenna, which is what I'm hearing is a lot of enthusiasm and excitement around sort of engaging around these topics and soliciting input and, and, you know, prompting discussion. And I think to your point, Jenna, that, you know, the listening sessions, at least when I was first thinking about it was, you know, like, we're going to start here. But I think what we're, what we're sort of circling around here is the need for a larger public engagement strategy that has multiple pieces to it. And being thoughtful about what kind of information we're collecting from what kinds of sources, right? And then the researcher, me, little researcher on my shoulder says, you know, we also need a strategy for how it is we're going to integrate all this information to sort of you make it usable and all of those things. Those are, that's a much bigger discussion than I think we can have right here in this meeting. And so to me, it sounds like where we're headed as a group, which is, I think terrific, which is to really come up with a strategy that is thoughtful around not just how we engage, whether it's forum, whether it's just listening sessions, whether it's surveys, but being thoughtful about the kinds of information we're getting from each of those sources, right? So it's really different to have a listening session where we're just going to be hearing people's responses to questions versus some sort of facilitated discussion versus a survey, right? And so I think, you know, to your point, Jenna, yeah, I think it's starting to feel big because it is big. And that's a really important thing. But I but perhaps we take this piece and we start to think of it as hanging on a hat rack or a tree, right, of something that's more strategic and larger. And I don't, maybe we need to get a group together, or maybe your group is going to do that, right, to come up with sort of that larger strategy that impoles all these pieces together. But I don't know that we can do all those things at once, right? And we have to be really intentional with what we do.
And Jenna, I really yeah, I appreciate your comments and I share your concern that we might be trying to boil the ocean here. And I think we just, we just need to get out there. And and maybe it's, you know, we just do, we start with one, right? And to your point, maybe it's a statewide one focused on one theme. And we set the stage to say, hey, this or set the expectation that this is, this is the start. And I think we're going to learn a lot of lessons, right? We don't know. We could host one of these and have two people show up or 200 people. And how we move forward, I think we'll want to calibrate based on on that experience. So I think let's, let's, I think the survey is great because it's low, low impact, low effort. Combined with perhaps one forum and start with that, let's learn from that experience and then we'll shape our next steps from that. That would be my suggestion. Just to move this forward. So Kim, briefly. You're on mute.
Two years later, still on mute. So I, I like all of that. And I wonder if the strategic planning around our engagement is a great topic for us to really work on in our retreat. And I'm thinking a survey could find its way to like the SBA, the VPA, we could get it out in a broad way, superintendents, it could, we have, you know, the right contacts to get this broadly shared. And that might help inform what we do around engagement. And then finally, on engagement, if we're doing just one big public one, when we did it last time, we did it, I think in advance of a board meeting or after a board meeting. So we might plan that it's a regular state board meeting, we cover our business, and then we extend our time to an evening on one of our regular meetings. And that might align well and not require finding another time where all of us are available, just a thought.
Okay. So, so Patrick and Jenna, what I'd like to suggest is that that we as a board sort of delegate authority to the two of you as a, as a team to take the sort of the inputs that you've heard from here and for you guys to, to, between the two of you, make a decision about the best way forward. And I, I, I think I'll say for myself, but I I think I speak for everybody that we have full confidence that you guys can find a good path forward. And I think it would probably be best if we leave it to the two of you to put together the the plan that you think works best based on the input that you've heard. I think we're going to be good with whatever you guys come up with.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Hi, thanks.
Does that work? Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, whatever I think we come up with, we'll circle back to.
Yeah, but I think my, I guess I do you want to wait for another board meeting to get further import? Or do you feel like you have enough to move? I feel like the board has given you enough input.
I think we have enough input. Let's, let's pick the can down the road a little bit. I mean, go forward a little bit because we'll we'll come up with a lot of other great ideas between now and then as well, I'm sure.
What I'm saying is I'd like, I'm suggesting that you guys make a, make a decision. And and just start moving it forward. So if you decide that you want to send out a survey, we're empowering you to go out and get that survey together and work with the constituencies to get it out the door. And to schedule one or more public engagement sessions. Okay, that makes sense.
Awesome. And Jenna and I will conference around this. Thanks.
I just want to make sure everybody on the board is comfortable with that approach because we're sort of delegating authority here.
Do we need a vote, a motion?
As long as there's unanimous consent, we're good. Okay, I'm not hearing any dissent. So I will treat that as unanimous consent. So the board is, has delegated that authority to to the two of you to move forward. So, thank you. Alrighty, we're running a little bit behind schedule, not terribly, but I do want to take I'll say a five minute break. Well, we'll make it a little bit more. We'll come back at 10:15 sharp. So the board will stand in recess until 10:15 sharp. Thank you. So members of the board, I think we're still waiting for a few folks to rejoin us. But I do see a forum. Alrighty, Tom, we're now on item J, which is an update from the Independent School Approval Review Committee. So take it away.
Great, thanks. So I'd like to start by just talking about the scope of the work that this committee is undertaking and make one suggestion about that, the scope of that work. Just a reminder, the size of the backlog is considerable, and I'm going to say more about that as we go. But included in the work of this committee, which by title is looking at independent school approvals, I think it makes sense that independent schools also include the tutorials. There are four of those, two of them are residential and also licensed by DCF. And then there are three kindergartens that would come under this committee's work. All three of those are DCF licensed and also accredited by NA EYC. I'm going to suggest that we also take on the teen parent education programs. There are six of those. All six are DCF licensed. One of those is residential. That is different in that there is, there are no state board rules for teen parent education programs, but there are standards by which we would evaluate them. I also think it's important to know that the process is pretty lengthy. When a school is up for approval, there's an application, then there's a site visit for almost all schools. And I'll talk about ones that we could maybe waive that site visit. Although that's, we are not suggesting that that is done lightly or very often. And then there's a report written about the school with some recommendations. That report has now, since last December, goes to legal counsel for a review. That then the recommendation will go to the school. The school has 30 days with which to respond. So it's a lengthy process, this approval process. And schools are at different stages of that process right now. Four of them have already been reviewed. The reports are written. And they are, those reports now sit with legal counsel. They were evaluated or approved under the under the old rules. There are several who have completed their applications and or updated their applications. And reports are either, either have been drafted or are being drafted. And there are a number, 60 schools, I said, whose approvals have been postponed from 2020, 2021. And then I'm including the 2022, the ones, there are 27 independent schools, two kindergartens, two tutorials and three teen parent education programs that are, whose approvals expire June 30 of this year. There are 23 more that will come up for, whose approvals expire next year. And then eight more in 2024, four more in 2025. And that 2025 number is important because schools are not to be approved for more than five years. Although technically right now, because these have been delayed, there are some whose approvals have expired. And so de facto, they're approved for more than five years. We would like to to clear that backlog. So the AOE staff has been very helpful in bringing the committee up to speed. And there are four that, as I said, that are already reviewed and waiting for legal. I think those should come before us pretty quickly. The others, we're recommending that the schools who have already filled out their applications don't need to file a brand new application. But we'll have to sign off on a set of assurances that address the new rules as we adopted at the last meeting. We are also suggesting that we do allow desk review a certain set of schools. Those would be the kindergartens, who, as I said, are all DCF licensed and accredited. That any school that is simply amending their application to add grades, if they've been visited within the last three years, we recommend that could be done without an extra site visit. And then general education schools with no special education programs, if they're NIASC approved, they also can be reviewed without a site visit. We, we believe that they, they should have to sign those, those assurances according to the new rules, but would not require a site visit. We should speed up dealing with these, these approvals. We won't see very many until fall is the word, maybe a handful between now and September. Which when you think about that we have 60 in the pipeline, that backlog is, is daunting. So besides the desk reviews that we suggested at the last meeting, I'd like to suggest maybe that there's a way that CIS could be involved and that there might be a way to contract site visits to independent schools, so it doesn't land solely on agency staff. But that's simply a suggestion. It's not a proposal or a motion for us to vote on. The one thing I do have a question about for the, for the full board is how we would stagger approvals. We don't really want all these 60 schools to come every five years that we have an onslaught of 60 schools at a time. So do we do it by approval date? For example, the ones that were, that expired in 2020, that we asked them to apply again in 2025, as they would normally have, have done? Or do we do it by the type of school that we would like to see cleared off the backlog earlier than others? So going forward, those are some questions that I'd like to return to. Going forward, it looks like we won't really have any April reviews, but we certainly have a lot of work to do as a committee. The AOE is going to bring forward a list of schools that they're proposing for desk review. They'll bring forward the draft of the assurances that schools will be asked to sign as part of this, as amending their application based on the new rules. And we'll come up with a communications plan on how we want to communicate the new rules and processes to the schools in advance of their application. Happy to open it up for questions or, or comments from other members of the committee.
So thanks for that comprehensive update, Tom. Perhaps I can suggest we take the first issue off the table, or the question I think you had, which was around the boards, the scope of the board's work with respect to the tutorial centers, the teen parent centers and the kindergartens. And unless there are any objections, my, 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 my sense is that that falls squarely within the jurisdiction of your committee. And we'll proceed on that basis unless there are any objections from, from board members. Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing any. So, so consider that within your, within your bailiwick. So as far as the, the desk reviews, I think everything that I heard, I think generally speaking, makes sense as far as, you know, where, how we should prioritize our, or, you know, where we should be willing to allow the agency to not perform a desk review. I think what I would suggest is that if, if the, working with the agency, if your committee could come back to the board at our April meeting with a definitive list of which schools and the rationale for why each one would not be subject to an, to, to a site visit and only have a, a desk review, I think that would be probably a good next step, unless anybody on the board feels otherwise. I think that's probably a, a good, I, I do think a desk review is, is, is probably a good way to help clear some of this backlog. Any objections with that? Okay. Then on the, the, the staggered reviews, I think a similar thing, I, I, I definitely agree, we do not want to set this up. So there's a, you know, where we have this massive peak of volume in five years with 60 schools. So I think it, your committee, working with the agency, if you can come up with a good proposal for, you know, where everybody is at and how you would propose staggering them and kind of the, the criteria, and bring that also back for the full board's, or a recommendation back to the full board in April, that would be tremendously helpful. As far as the ones that are in, that are sort of in, in a kind of final stages of that review process by the agency, you know, we made a deliberate decision as a board to hold off on approvals in anticipation of the new rules coming into effect. And I feel very strongly, I don't, it doesn't matter where anybody's at in the process, they need to be, they need to comply with the new rules before they're approved. So for those who've gone through the process, I think, you know, if there's already been a site visit, we're not suggesting that we would need another site visit or something like that, but all of the other elements of approval that they would need to comply with under the new rules, I think we, we need to hold them accountable to that. That, that, that's my personal perspective. I'll open it up to other board members. Wild.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I think that's why we were talking about the assurances that we would want to make, have the list that they will check off and say, yes, we are doing this.
Right, the only, the only ones that, there was a question about are the four that have already been reviewed and previous to this December, when the legal review step was instituted, they would have been approved earlier. But they have gone through everything, except just that they're undergoing a legal review right now. Those are the only ones there is a question about. Everyone else, we agreed that they wouldn't need to submit a new application, but there would be a supplementary document that would be the set of assurances, and that's being drafted right now with Patrick and Emily. To, and we can bring that, the draft of that to the next meeting as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wouldn't want to, whatever those four may be, I wouldn't want to treat anybody differently. So if, if they haven't been approved by the board, everybody needs to be treated the, the same. So Jennifer and then Tammy.
Yeah, and I'm just sort of going back in my mind. My recollection was that we kind of put those four to the side pending implementation of the amendments to the 2200 rule series. I, I think we didn't, Tom?
Yeah, they're a different, they're a different set.
Okay.
I think we, we put every, we put everybody to the side, and, and I think that's the key thing. We didn't put, we put everybody to the side, and everybody needs to be treated equally. If you didn't, if you have not been approved, you need to, you need to meet the new regulations.
Yeah, because I thought we had brought up those schools and then we decided that we weren't going to make any action on them until the rules were enacted.
Not just those, all schools.
Yeah, we kind of stopped, you know.
Yes. Tammy.
Thank you. For desk review, are there specific criteria that we're using to decide which schools are eligible for desk review and which aren't? And if I see you nodding your head, what are those criteria? I'm just curious to understand a little better.
So based on recommendations from the agency staff, they would be the kindergartens, the three kindergartens, because they have been licensed by DCF and also accredited, so there's been a site visit by somebody. The schools that have been visited with a site visit in the last three years, but are simply amending that application to add a grade level, it's not a substantial amendment to their application. And then non-special education schools that are NIASC accredited, so have had a site visit by somebody else. So those are the three categories that we're suggesting in this round of trying to clear the backlog, that they would be eligible for a desk review.
Is that, Tammy, does that make sense to you? Okay.
Can I, can I just ask, how many schools would that be, Tom?
So there are three kindergartens. I could, I have that number for the amendments. I think there are three amendments. And I think the general education, there's a handful, maybe five general education NIASC approved schools. So not a lot.
Kim.
Thank you. So this is for what we have in backlog for right now, when the rules change in terms of who's eligible to, the two categories kick in July 1, 2023. What does that sort of re-review look like or that process look like to ensure that Jan, July 1, 2023, we are, you know, appropriately approving tuition payment to only those which meet the rules in effect at that time?
So the agency staff is revising the application to reflect the, to reflect the new rules and those will, that will be the application that the schools who, whose approval expires in 2023, that will be the application that they're asked to submit. So in line with the new rules.
Kim.
Yeah, but so if, what happens July 1, 2023, with all those schools that may only be approved for general ed, that can no longer receive public tuition, what happens? So the, like, just because they happen to not be up for reapproval, doesn't mean they can receive public tuition if they're no longer meeting the rules to receive public tuition effective July 1, 2023. So what does that review look like for everybody, all independent schools prior to July 1, 2023?
So this isn't been drafted yet, so, and I defer to agency staff if they were here. But I believe that the application would have two sections, one that would be filled out by every school, and that one would be filled out by schools who are expecting to receive public tuition dollars.
I'm sorry, Tom, I think I'm not being clear. I understand what happens for those who are seeking approval July 1 or 2023 or after, or who are up for renewal after that. But those who are, let's say, not up for renewal till 2025, how will their approval for ability to receive tuition be compliant to the rules that become effective July 1, 2023? What does that process look like?
So those are the set of assurances that schools will need to sign off on.
And so there. So there'll, there'll be some process for, you know, middle of 20, you know, 20, end of 2022, where some notice for assurances goes out with a deadline for return, not our process to have to worry about. I just simply want to make sure that for the independent school standpoint, they've had the opportunity to take the time to be responsive to those assurances. They're not insignificant if they want to be able to receive public tuition, and even if they're not up for renewal at that time.
Right, the, the, and the rules, remember, as they were filed, had two effective dates. And so, and so that will come into play as well. The idea is that, that's why we need to talk about a communication plan to schools to let them know what's coming. Exactly the point you're making, to say, these are the assurances that you're going to be asked to sign going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer.
Okay, so, and I think too, that the approval process is going to be the same, it's rule 2226, it's the same whether or not a school is approved or approved but ineligible to receive public tuition. So the approval process, I think, will still look the same. And then the question of whether or not the school is eligible or ineligible to receive public funds is a separate question that I think could be addressed separately, because it really goes to the, the status of that school's approval, but they still have to go through that same approval process.
And to remember, there's also a rule now for schools that have a residential component as well.
So I think really what this boils down to is, and, and Tom, I'm going to suggest that, and I know Emily has already started thinking through some of this, as well as other agency staff. But this would be a great topic of discussion for your committee. And if you could sort of report back out on that on April, so what, what's the, effectively, I think, Kim, what you're getting at is what's the transition plan for schools that are currently approved? And I do think the board potentially has a role in that. It might be a, I guess the question in my mind is, you know, is it as simple as the school signing some sort of certification to say that they comply with the new rules or, or is there a need for the board to take some affirmative action to say, we're, we're reapproving under this newly created category that takes effect July 1st? And that's, I don't think we have the answer to those questions right now. I'd suggest that the committee work on that and, and report back in April. Kim?
Thank you. I think that, that's in line with, with what I was wondering, and I think any assurance would have to have sort of almost checkboxes for all the, there's so much required to be eligible to receive public tuition that whether or not that's a full-throated reapproval for that, the, I think it would have to be more than a, you know, paragraph saying we, we comply. I think we would want there to be a checklist and attachments that does let us just do what the agency would probably do or others regarding sort of a desk review at that point that would have a, a structure to it. So yeah, thank you, Oliver. That was exactly what I was wondering.
Okay. Tom, I think, does that answer all the, the questions that you had? Do you feel like your committee has a clear charge for where to go next?
Yes, lots of work to do in April.
Yes. So we'll, and we'll plan accordingly. Remind me as we set the agenda for April to set aside time. Sounds like we'll have quite a bit to go through. Okay, Patrick.
Yes, I think there was a question in the committee, whether your charge to the committee was to deal with TUP stand, TPE standards and rules or just standards. Is that correct, Tom?
Well, there are no state board rules governing TPEs. There are only standards. And so the recommendation that would come before us from the agency will be based on those standards.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So next, we're going to move on to item K, which is to review and discuss the Attorney General's opinion. So I'm going to provide a little bit of a preamble here, just to set expectations appropriately, provide a little bit of background. So a couple of things. One is, as the, as the most tenured member of the board, I've been on the board now for four years. I have, I'm in a unique position where I'm the only board member who was on the board at the time of the board's involvement in the final stages of Act 46. And which ultimately culminated in the, in the board's final order, which was heavily litigated up to the Vermont Supreme Court. I, in full disclosure, I voted for the final order, but leading up to that, there were a series of preliminary votes on a number of the merger decisions that the board made along the way. And one of those decisions had to do with the merger of, of Stowe and, and Elmore and Morristown. That was a very close vote. It, it, it only passed by one vote. I voted, I, I just want to disclose, I voted in the negative. I voted against that merger. And at the time felt pretty strongly that it was, that that merger was not, was not necessary. So I think I just want to be very transparent about that. And, you know, that history is, is I think really important because, you know, as I've been faced as the chair and with, you know, one of my primary responsibilities is to organize the agenda. As this current issue has come before us, you know, that puts me in a, in a rather unique position. So with that sort of old his, ancient, ancient history before you, what transpired over the past year is that Stowe voted last year, early last year, to withdraw from its unified district. Many months later, the other communities in that district ratified that vote, they held a vote in, in late, late last year to ratify that vote. There was an opinion that the Emily Simmons, General Counsel for the, the agency, had sent to the town of Stowe back in March last year that indicated that, that under current law, that there wasn't a legal path available for Stowe to withdraw. Stowe, Stowe's own municipal attorney had a slightly different opinion. Um Stowe, Stowe's own municipal attorney had a slightly different opinion um that it provided uh uh to the Stowe Select Board. Um, so that was last March. In in December, we were notified uh that these these final ratifications votes took place. And we uh were asked by the self-selected representatives of the petitioners in Stowe uh to put this on the agenda. Mindful of the fact that there were sort of these dueling legal opinions and typically the the board uh relies on the agency for legal um guidance. Um and whenever there's a conflict, we we then go to the A G and we ask for independent legal counsel. And particularly complex matters, the the agency, uh excuse me, the A G's office um contracts that out and we've had experiences, for example, with uh with George Belcher has assisted us uh um a- as have other attorneys over the years. Uh so I reached out in December, uh shortly after we received um this request uh from Stowe. It be it was clear to me that we had um, you know, conflicting uh legal opinions, including an opinion from the agency um whom we typically rely on for legal advice. Um, I I thought it would be appropriate to seek out independent uh legal guidance. Uh so I wrote to the Attorney General's Office in uh in December. I asked for uh an opinion on um the question of whether the process that Stowe was um pursuing was permitted under law. And most importantly, relevant to our board, and again, looking back on history with this board. Uh whether it was within our jurisdiction and whether we have the authority to take any action relative to this withdrawal. And that's really important because in the past, not too distant past, this board has colored a little outside the lines uh and the general assemble general assembly has stepped in and asserted its authority. Um so I I'm always very sensitive to uh the board being very careful to stay within its lane and not color outside uh the lines. Um so we we always need to be mindful of that. Um the other concern in my mind is that if if as we're going forth with a process, if there is sort of, you know, cloudiness, legal uncertainty. If if we take some action, it it uh that creates a a new uh municipal entity. Um, you know, that could potentially create a cloud over that that impacts uh things. So it's really in the interest of everybody to have clarity. So uh we saw that in December. Jennifer Samuelson and I had uh of of two meetings, um at least two meetings with the Attorney General's Office. I know that representatives from Stowe also met with uh the Attorney's General's Office. We received a few weeks ago um an opinion from, an informal opinion from the Attorney General's uh office, which I've sent to you and it's in our a- agenda packet. Uh along with uh correspondence we've received from other individuals. And my reading of uh of the Attorney General's opinion, as I turn to the last page, is, you know, that it it does not appear that we have the authority to take this up. Um but it's it's obviously a a significant question and I wanted to bring this to the full board um i- in the interest of of transparency. And I also wanted to provide an opportunity for the folks from um Stowe to provide their input um so that you all have the opportunity to to hear from them. And I again, I would stress that what we're talking about today is the opinion, we're not talking about the substance of the merits of of the the actual request. We're talking about the the question of whether we have the legal authority to take this issue up. And and I I'm going to limit our discussion to that and not get into the substance of the issue. So that's a a little bit of the background um of of what's going on. Um, I am going to ask members uh from Stowe to identify themselves and 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 hopefully have one or a a a small number of people um who are going to be speaking on behalf of the petitioners, but before I go there, I just want to check in with the board and make sure we're all clear about what it is we're going to be talking about here. Okay. Thank you. So um so uh for members of the public on the phone, um whom do we have from Stowe who would uh like to address uh the board?
Um, Mr. Olson, Jim Brockhausen.
Yep.
Uh, thank you very, thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, I am a resident.
Sorry, Jim, before we go any further, are you are you speaking on behalf of of all the petitioners or are are there any other members who are going to be s- speaking?
No, uh, there will be one other member who will be speaking, Richard Bland.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you again. Um I'm a resident of Stowe. I'm not an attorney, but a working guy who has spent seven years on the Stowe School Board. I've been involved with Act forty six from the very beginning. As a school board member, my actions and thoughts relating to Act forty six and our A G S was heavily dependent on guidance from the Agency of Education and the Vermont School Board Association. Both organizations regularly provided school board guidance relating to Act forty six. As a board, we worked very hard on our A G S to make sure our A G S demonstrated we exceeded Vermont's educational quality standards and was the best practicable plan. Yet, despite the Secretary of Education's approval of our plan twice on a split vote vote, we were rejected by the Board of Education. With little hope are left, our two boards worked collaboratively to construct LaMoyale South Unified Union. Part of the process was to put into place the Articles of Agreement. We did so and put it to the voters on February twenty six, two thousand and nineteen. The three communities approved the L S U U Articles of Agreement. In Ms. London's research, I noticed that she did not specifically look at LaMoyale South Unified Union's Articles of Agreement. Perhaps because most of the articles were required by the Agency of Education to be in there and did not permit many changes. Article fourteen is one of the articles that we had no authority to change. But if you look on page eleven of LaMoyale South Unified Union Articles of Agreement, it's on their website. You would see that under the article, it says the following, and I am quoting word for word. Article one, paragraph C, towns of residents for which the new union district is responsible. Provided, however, that such amendment must proceed pursuant to Title sixteen, section seven twenty one, addition of a new member town, or section seven twenty four, withdrawal by a member town in year two or after, period. You should notice that the Agency of Education omitted the phrase voluntarily or voted to to be merged. It does, that language does not exist in our Articles of Agreement. Now, as mentioned earlier, I'm not an attorney. However, I have to believe the Agency of Education utilizes Vermont Educational Law's best attorneys to carefully draft the Articles of Agreement that we were mandated to be used. However, I'd be curious if Ms. London would have a different perspective knowing that what we were provided by the Agency of Education seems to be in conflict with the actual wording of section seven twenty four. And the three communities that voted to ratify them in good faith believing that the legislative intended that these specific articles were accurate and lawful. Why would we think otherwise? Would the Secretary of State's office think otherwise? So if the Agency of Ed made a mistake and possibly misrepresented what the Articles of Agreement should have said that in my opinion, it is not the problem of Stowe, Morrisville, and Elmore. We followed the process as outlined in those mandated Articles of Agreement. No entity can lawfully make such a significant change after the vote. An- another issue that I find very troublesome is the lack of disclosure to the residents of Stowe, Elmore, and Morrisville. Now that I've had to review laws, statutes, Ms. Simmons' letter, and Ms. London's informal opinion, it becomes abundantly clear to me that our three communities had another, more logical choice. Possibly a better choice than pursuing an A G S. As the laws laws are currently writ written, we could have, back in two thousand and fifteen, voluntarily merged. Take advantage of the merger tax incentives. And if we found out that the major, the merger was not working, we could have voted to separate. Yet, that option was not disclosed to us by the Agency of Education or the Vermont School Board Association. We were strongly led to believe that the only way to maintain our successful successful status quo was the A G S. Apparently, it appears we could or should have considered taking the same path that Reed's Borough and Ripdendit. Should those who drafted or helped to draft Act forty six and the Vermont School Board Association, who provided the school board's guidance on how to navigate through Act forty six, have told school boards, towns, and their constituents that by pursuing an A G S would put at risk of having permanent governance structure imposed on their towns and also forego the tax incentives. I would think that the A G's office would frown upon such a major absence of disclosure of critical information, whether intentional or not. I'd like to know if Ms. London considered that when she was developing her informal opinion. So after reading the opinion, it would suggest that the Board of Education has no standing to hear our proposal. And it seems to me, given current law, we are permanently merged. I would hope, since the Articles of Agreement are defective and the fact that critical information was not disclosed to Vermont School Boards about the advantages and off-ramp opportunities that voluntary mergers could provide, Ms. London perhaps would have a different opinion. A court may have a different opinion. Also, Ms. London speaks quite a bit about legislative intent. I find it quite unbelievable that the courts would agree that the legislature intended that these various nuances in the law were intentionally designed to be an obstruction for the Board of Education to hear our proposal. I just don't believe that's true. Let's remember, your predecessors predecessors voted twice on our proposal in two thousand and eighteen. In both cases, it was a split vote. Obviously, we had a very good A G S. We are now two and a half years into the merger. The communities of Stowe, Elmore, and Morrisville voted in twenty twenty one to allow Stowe to separate with the hope that LaMoyale South Supervisory Union would once again be our governance structure. The voter turnout was very strong. The community said a loud voice was almost two out of three voting for Stowe to separate. Understanding that the merged districts are failing our students and our taxpayers. In two thousand and eighteen, the vote by the Board of Education was split, as mentioned earlier. But ask yourselves this, what if your predecessors got it wrong? What if the vast majority of voters in these three communities knows something you don't? No board is infallible. It happens every day. So back to that legislative intent. Don't you think that the legislative intent was and still is to charge this board today with the responsibility that our Q, our communities have the best practical plan in place and would also expect the board to correct any possible past mistakes? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brockhausen. Um, I just, I want to, and I forgot to, I should have mentioned this before. Um, but I want to make sure that you're aware of H seven twenty seven. It's a bill that has been in considerable discussion in the House and I just want to point out that the seven twenty seven, which uh is effectively a major rewrite of chapter eleven, which covers merger, uh school district mergers as well as dissolutions includes a specific provision that um will address uh the the challenges that we've run up against, that the A G's office has identified and does provide a very clear path forward, uh acknowledging the votes that have already ta- taken place and provides a a clear path forward. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that. And the Board of Education uh has uh is is very supportive uh of um the the intent of that bill and specifically the provisions in that bill that uh address the the very concerns that Stowe has run up against and provide a a clear path forward for Stowe. So know that the board is supportive of resolving these issues and and a- allowing uh Stowe to to have a path forward. Uh but we need that clarity in in the statute. Um so I just, I want to make sure you've seen that and you're aware of that.
I am aware of the bill. I am also aware that it's gone through some various changes. Um, I had spoke to our uh state representative Heidi Shorman uh on Monday. Uh, she feels that the changes are uh while it still might possibly provide a path for us to go back to where we were. It is uh a lot more onerous than um uh uh what the bill was originally, had been originally written. I did also read an editorial by the Chair of the School Board for Westminster also commenting that the bill as it stands today uh creates uh quite a few hurdles and puts a uh a lot of um hoops that uh that need to be jumped through in order to make it happen. Um, recognizing that school board members, uh most of us uh have full-time jobs and to go through that process would be a very arduous, arduous task. Also, um my experience with education uh laws changing, Act forty six was a great example. Uh how things get changed uh as they go from committee to the House floor, assuming it gets passed on the House floor. Goes to Senate Ed, uh more changes are made, gets voted on there, and then it goes back and they go to a committee and try to have a compromise to the changes between the two committees. I saw that with Act forty six when all of a sudden nine hundred was the magic number. Um, uh, that the uh, that if you had nine hundred uh EQS students, you could be a standalone um entity. Uh, where did that number come from? Somewhere in Senate Ed Committee. Um, seemed to benefit Montpelier exclusively. Um, so there's things going on. There's always politics going on. Um, honestly, uh, we had a lot of hopes and desires when Act forty six and the things that we were hopeful that were being discussed in the committee ended up not benefiting us at all. So I don't have, I'm hope, I hope it works so it's a smooth transition. But frankly, uh, history has taught me uh that I should very much lower my expectations.
Okay. I would just caution relying on on commentary for from third-party individuals. That commentary you referred to speaks to the other parts of the bill. I I don't necessarily agree with 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 all of the conclusions in it, but it certainly does not speak to the this very specific language that addresses Stowe's unique situation. So I would encourage everyone from Stowe to focus on the language that's very specifically designed to address uh Stowe's unique circumstance. So with that, I'm going to turn to Mr. Bland, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I think the Chair's preamble uh was well stated and accurate. Um, I do want to point out first, uh for me personally, I am an attorney. I've been an attorney in Vermont uh for thirty seven years. Uh, worked for the state's largest law firm and then as general counsel to a, an insurance company based in Montpelier. I too served on the Stowe School Board for over six years. Um, I do want to point out that with respect to uh Ms. Simmons' opinion that was referenced by the Chair back in March of last year and Ms. London's opinion uh that came in uh just recently from the Attorney General's Office. Though the opinions rely on different rationale and different analysis, I think the Chair stated it appropriately, that the conclusion is, is that it appears, according to them uh that the State Board of Education does not have jurisdiction. Um, I want to point out that with respect to those two opinions, neither of them addressed what was critical to the Town of Stowe Select Board's municipal attorney's opinion that to deny Stowe's request for a withdrawal after its town vote. And after the after its town vote and after the ratification votes of Maristown and Elmore would be discriminatory. That's the word she used. And neither Ms. Simmons' opinion nor Ms. London's opinion addressed that. So I'm not going to belabor and rehash the opinions that we have given you. So I sent you on the tenth, our opinion. And I'm an attorney and in addition to Jim, Lee Pelletier, who's an attorney, penned that opinion. And that opinion, I'm not going to go over. I'm just going to raise in the limited time that we have on this issue, two points with you. Two points. The first is that we have been treated differently by the State Board of Education in the history that was given by the Chair, in that we made our request in December, after getting the ratification votes for this board, to take up our request to withdraw. And time has gone by. A lot of time has gone by. And we have not received the same treatment that other towns that have voted to withdraw and received the ratification votes of the other member towns in the district. We have not received that same treatment. So the first point I want to make is, until this board grants our request for a hearing on the substantive basis of our withdrawal, not only is the hearing delayed, the hearing is denied. And so long as the board takes the view that we will not entertain the substance of your request, we will not grant your hearing, our request is denied. And secondly, I ask you, it is not just the opinions of the counsel that you have in Ms. Simmons' letter and Ms. London's informal opinion. It is how this board has interpreted and applied the law as a quasi-judicial body. That's what you are. And when I look at how the board has handled and treated Ripton, Reedsboro, and most significantly Westminster. Westminster, as you know, with Athens and Grafton, was part of a forced merge district. I ask you, and you have Lincoln coming up. After Lincoln voted and the other towns in that district have ratified, Lincoln is a unified district. I ask you, each and every one of you, if you don't grant Stowe's request for a hearing and you don't grant Stowe's request on a substantive basis to withdraw after the voters have spoken, the will of the people of our three communities, I ask each and every one of you, do you believe in doing that, in denying us a hearing, in denying our request, that you have treated us fairly? Equally? Or do you believe that based on how you have dealt with Reedsboro, Ripton, Westminster, and how you're going to deal with Lincoln, that you have treated us differently? And it is those, if the answer is, you can't say that you're treating us the same in your interpretation and application of the law, then that raises, as I have indicated in my opinion, in the opinion of so many other attorneys that I have asked, if you have solicited a constitutional law professor's opinion, that you have in treating us differently, in treating us unequally, in treating us unfairly, in not addressing legal issues like the regulatory estoppel issue, which is a legal concept that Jim Brockhausen just alluded to with the, with respect to the Articles of Agreement. That's not in Ms. London's opinion. It's not in Ms. Simmons' opinion. If you treat us differently on due process and equal protection grounds, that raises constitutional issues and you have received no opinion, none, from Ms. Simmons or Ms. London on those very critical issues that impact every one of us who voted in Stowe, Maristown, and Elmore. I ask you, are you treating us the same equally and fairly? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bland. I'm going to just respond briefly to a couple of things I heard and then I'm going to turn it over for, to my colleagues here on the board for discussion, questions, comments. But I just want to be really clear because, you know, I've heard from you. I saw in the opinion piece that you sent to us, you know, some pretty fiery language around, you know, sort of the board being arbitrary and capricious and the, you know, the delay in discussion, et cetera. And I just want to be really clear that under our rules, the Chair of the Board sets the agenda. So it is unfair to criticize the rest of my colleagues here on the board and the board as a whole. Your concerns are more appropriately directed at me as the Chair. And I have pretty thick skin. I'm happy to take that criticism. I would ask that you not level that criticism on the rest of my colleagues on the board because we have not had this discussion as a board and we are having this discussion today. I felt it was appropriate to seek legal counsel from the AG on these questions. They're complicated issues. The Vice Chair and I had a few different discussions with the AG's office. I know that they've met with you and your colleagues. These things take time, but I think it would be inappropriate and, you know, you're an attorney. I, you know, you've represented boards before, I'm sure. It just, it would be irresponsible for the board to charge forward without actually having good legal advice. And that's what we sought and I think it's really unfair to, first of all, characterize the board, the entire board with the brush that you did. If you want to criticize me, go for it. But I think, you know, we sought legal counsel quite expeditiously. It took time to get that opinion. We are here today at our first regular meeting after receiving that advice. So I think some of those criticisms are a little unfair. With that said, I'm going to open up to discussion amongst the board. Questions, comments? Kim? Oh, then Jennifer. And then Richard and Jim, if you wouldn't mind taking your hands down, it just gets confusing to tell who's up.
Hi, thank you. I just would like to call attention to referencing Emily and Counselor London as the attorneys that they are in their title. And then I would just like to point to the appreciation for seeking independent opinion because I am quite certain that we are doing our best to act within our legislative authority. And I am quite certain too that there are rare occasions where anybody would wish for us to be doing otherwise. What other areas would seem appropriate that we should act without knowing that we have legislative authority? I think that that would be poorly received in all venues. So that, that's, I'm appreciative of taking the time to get opinions. Thanks, Oliver.
Thanks. Jennifer?
Thanks. And, you know, I'm hearing a lot of frustration by both Jim and Richard, which I can fully appreciate. And I, you know, as I read Section seven twenty-one and seven twenty-four, you know, as Jim pointed out in his presentation, it does lead to an illogical result. It doesn't, you know, facially, it doesn't make sense to me that whether a, you know, town can withdraw should depend on whether or not it's a union school district or a unified union school district and whether it was merged voluntarily or forced merged. There should be an off-ramp and I think, you know, the legislature seems to recognize that. But I think, you know, to the question of what power this board has right now, as I read Section seven twenty-four, which is where you are because you're a unified union school district and you did not vote to merge, we're stuck with the current language of Section seven twenty-four. So I feel badly that you guys are in the position that you're in. I'm heartened that the legislature, you know, seems to be aware of this and is taking corrective measures. But until that happens, you know, we're guided by the same standards that are currently listed in the rule. So, you know, unfortunately, I think that's where we are today. And if that language changes, I think that it would be something that the board would definitely revisit.
And along those lines, you know, coming back to the, you know, the theme of, you know, arbitrary and capricious, you know, the moment the board starts sort of exercising, you know, extrajudicial authority, going beyond its authority and, you know, to, you know, to do something for one community that isn't explicitly authorized under the law, that's, that's, those are the moments when we start being accused of being arbitrary and capricious. And we're trying to be really faithful to, you know, the limits of our authority and not go beyond that. So Tammy?
Thank you. And I just want to echo Jennifer's comments too. I too hear your frustration and I think it's a frustrating moment for you and also for members of the board, right? I mean, this is, nobody wants to be having this conversation today this way. But I would like to know a little bit more and I know, Oliver, you referenced it, sort of where we are in the statute, sort of the process in the General Assembly and what that looks like and what that timing might look like. Because I also recognize that, you know, timing is important here. And so are we anticipating that there might be some resolution in the next sixty to ninety days in this session that then would give us clarity? And if there isn't, what is sort of, what is our collective thinking about our path forward in the absence of that happening?
So I'll, I'll, I'll take that one and then Kim, I'll ask you to chime in here as well. But where we're at right now with H seven twenty-seven, and this is why I'm really encouraging Jim and Richard, don't read what somebody in Westminster has to say about the bill, does not concern Stowe. You need to read the section of the bill that actually pertains to Stowe. And the way that it's crafted right now, it recognizes and acknowledges the votes that, so this is in session law, right? Which is law that is not going to go in the green books, so to speak. So it's dealing with a contemporaneous issue. And the way it's drafted right now, the section that applies, uniquely applies to Stowe, is it recognizes the votes that have already taken place and nobody's going to ask you to revote anything. And what it asks for, and it said, it also acknowledges the AGS plan that was already, that you guys already worked on, right? So that's another second key element. It's acknowledging and recognizing a lot of the effort that's already taken, that's already gone into this process. And essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, I'm really simplifying it, but it says basically, take the AGS proposal off the shelf, dust it off, update it, come back to the board with an updated AGS proposal and a plan for how you're going to, going to implement that, which you need to do anyway, right? And the board looks at that and we basically say, either it's good and we give it the, you know, the thumbs up, or we say, hey, you know, can you go back and we have some questions, go back and work on it. And then there's an iterative process if need be, but ultimately leading to the board saying, giving it the green light and saying, go ahead. So that bill with that language, and Kim, keep me honest here, passed out of House Education unanimously, right? And personally, I'm frustrated as I'm reading these op-eds accusing the board of being arbitrary and capricious. I personally drove up to Montpelier, not once, but twice, and made a personal appearance before the House Education Committee and advocated for this language. Nobody from Stowe was there, right? So I find that really frustrating. And I'm, what I'm, where I'm going with this is, as this moves through the legislative process, I feel like you guys need to get engaged and you need to be advocating for the passage of this bill with this language that gives you a clear path forward. So there's a lot of momentum behind it. It obviously will move over to the Senate and needs to pass the Senate. But I, you know, rather than, you know, criticizing the board, I think a lot of that energy would be better expended helping to get this legislation over the line so we can all work collaboratively to get to the conclusion that you want to get to. Kim, anything else? Did I miss anything or misspeak?
I don't think so, Oliver. I think that it was pretty intentional that we craft at least some initial proposal that acknowledged the work that had already happened and those that are in process. So we had, you know, three, three session law-focused efforts that I think clarify, address, and allow this to move forward. And again, I think Stowe, as they've referenced, have had put in that work in advance during their alternative governance structure studies. And Donna's offering exactly where it can be found in seven twenty-seven in the comments for anybody who can't see it, which I was furiously looking through, I don't know, one hundred and seventy-two pages and I couldn't find exactly where to point us.
Section five, one fifty-four. So again, Section five, one fif, page one fifty-four, Section five, that's, you know, that's, that's what you need to be looking at, not what somebody from Westminster is writing about. Tammy, does that answer your question?
And so the timing for us to revisit this would be after session is over? I just, I'm trying to get a handle in my, where our role.
I think once the legislative session wraps up, assuming that this bill in some form passes, hopefully it will, I think there's a lot of momentum behind it, then, you know, we'll have clarity on what the next, and everybody will have clarity on what the next steps are.
Thank you. That's just helpful.
Other board members? Okay. All righty, Jim and then Richard, final comments before we wrap this up. Hope you're on mute, Jim.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to address you folks. The one, the two things I would ask you to keep in mind, particularly if the legislation doesn't get through or it gets modified, is the voters who voted for the Articles of Agreement had no way to understand that there was more behind Section seven two four. They were given a very specific, very clear language that after two years, a community could withdraw. And that's what they voted on. And I think that's a very powerful piece. I think the Secretary of State would agree that you cannot change what a ballot says after the voters have voted. And particularly such a significant change as that. So hopefully, and I think it gives you the reason why you can take it up sooner than later and that you have that opportunity. And lastly, I'll just revisit my last thoughts. And that is, this board is always charged, I would think by the legislature, to have the best practicable plans in place. And things change. Right now, we're winding up a capital committee of which roughly thirty to thirty-five million dollars has to be spent on Stowe's schools versus Maristown, which is about a million dollars. On the tax burden, Maristown and Elmore pick up fifty-five percent of Stowe's capital improvements. It just doesn't seem fair, particularly that because their children will never even go to that school, nor, you know, nor, uh, uh, you know, logical that people with different tax rates in addition are going to be picking up the majority of the cost for the capital improvements required to Stowe. And that's going to happen in the next couple of months. And this is why we're really concerned about the urgency of moving this forward. Because the thought process of people who are on the school board is that the feedback is today, this bond will likely fail. And if you ever been in Stowe High School, a high school with no, no walls for classrooms, you would readily understand how desperate this need has been. And it's going to be really different, difficult for the three communities to work in harmony when that bond vote comes up later this year. So we need to get this thing moving and that's one of the key reasons why.
Okay.
Thank you.
Richard, any final comments?
Yes, briefly, thank you. First, Mr. Chair, no offense intended with my comments. Secondly, we are aware of the bill. We followed the bill as it went through House Ed. Bills get modified, as we all know. Some bills don't make it through the finish line. We would all agree that existing law under Title 16, whether you're talking about 721, section 721, or the sections that, that's applicable to a unified school district and section 724, existing law is different than what is being considered by our legislative body. And the last point I would want to make is though I thought it would go without saying that we disagree respectfully with the conclusions reached by Ms. Simmons and Ms. London, what Jennifer Samuelson just said about the vote to merge. As a matter of fact, as Jim referenced in his statement, it is important to appreciate that the three communities on February 26, 2019, yes, it was after this board's order in November 2018, but the three communities actually voted to for the Lemoyle South Unified Union School District. To suggest that those three communities didn't vote or that the votes don't count is simply a fiction. I thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Kim.
I was just going to offer, and of course Donna can keep me honest if I'm getting this wrong, but that the session law as proposed that would handle this situation would provide potentially for a timeline that would allow for budgeting as though, you know, for the coming school year for FY 2024 to be done as the dissolved and return to an SU structure. If that's at all helpful, I am not familiar with what's happening with the bond vote. But in terms of the budgets under which the school district or the, you know, potentially forming, reforming SU, those would be, this timing is not going to prevent that from being effective potentially in the fall if session law were to come into effect.
And, and I, I think, Kim, just to tag along on that, it's worth pointing out that what's proposed under session law, the, the timeline wouldn't be any different than realistically what would be achieved if current law were different from how it's being interpreted. So, you know, I guess that's to say that, you know, we're not trying to like make this process difficult or take longer. We're, we, we just want to make sure that there's clear statutory authority for, for our benefit and also quite frankly, for your benefit, right? So, you know, last thing you want is the equivalent of a, of a, a real estate transaction with a cloud on the title, right? You want to make sure that this new municipal entity is created with clear, clear authority. Any final comments or questions from board members? Is everybody, everybody comfortable with, you know, where we're at right now? And, and specifically that we, we're going to sit tight and, and wait to see where things land at the end of the legislative session? Does, does anybody feel we have the authority or should be taking this up now? Okay. All righty. Well, I, I do thank you, Jim and Richard. And again, I, we fully understand and empathize with the frustration that you feel. I, I know you've been through a lot. Know, and hopefully you get the sense today, we're not trying to be difficult. We're, we're trying to do the job that we can within the parameters that we have to work within. And at the same time, we, we are advocating for a, a, a clear path forward with you. And my strong recommendation is to get engaged in, in this, this process as it moves over to the Senate and, and advocate for your position to ensure that we get this to the finish line.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All righty. So with that, we'll turn to item L, which I think we can get through pretty quickly. So a little bit of background here. So we've obviously, at our last special meeting, we, we advanced our, our proposed amendments to Rule Series 2202 to LCAR. Lot of discussion and, and obviously entering sort of new ground here. And I think it's fair to say, I think everyone recognizes that when it comes to the practical implementation of these rules, the practitioners on the ground, particularly in those districts that, that rely on, on tuitioning of their general ed population are going to run into, into a variety of issues, some of which, you know, they'll work through operationally. Other issues, I think it's fair to say they'll probably identify room for, or opportunities to, to improve the rules. So had a few conversations with, with folks on the board and the general sense is that it would be really beneficial to stand up a small, and I would stress, small group of practitioners in the field in those areas that are going to be most impacted, comprised of LEAs and a few of the schools that are going to be impacted to get some, provide them the ability to gather some kind of real world experience with what they're dealing with, periodically report back to the board on what they're seeing and, and ultimately help sort of shape some recommendations when we get to phase two of rulemaking around 2200. So at this point, I have reached out to a couple of superintendents. Jennifer and I have had a conversation with Randy Lowe, who's superintendent in the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union, which has a lot, deals with this significantly. I've left a message for the superintendent up in St. Johnsbury. Those, you know, someone from those entities would certainly come to mind. But at this point, I, I just wanted the board to authorize to establish, actually create an advisory commission. And, and then we will, you know, appoint members to that. So anyway, that's the general gist of it. I'll open up for any questions or, or comments. Nope. Jennifer, oh, Tammy, yes.
I'm an active hand raiser today. Hey, so I think this is a terrific idea. Thank you, Oliver. And I, you know, I love the fact that we're starting, that we're using this as an opportunity to think of policy and regulation as a process, right? Where we need to have good feedback loops on sort of how things are working so we can continually improve. So I, I applaud the idea and I think it's terrific. So, you know, great job.
Awesome. Thank you. So Tom, I saw a lot of hands go up and then a lot come down. So I think Tammy, that's a sign you, you said it all. So Tom, and then Secretary French.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm wondering, when you say small, I wonder how big is small? And recognizing the geographical diversity of the non-operating districts in Vermont, I'm, I'm wondering if that's the way it will be organized, I'm wondering what the constitution of this commission would be.
Yeah, when it's small, I, I'd like to keep it under, certainly under 10. You know, I don't want to create one of these 30 person, you know, twenty, it's, they're just unwieldy. So certainly under 10 is, is what I was thinking. But I wasn't proposing that we, you know, create a specific number. And I think my guess is we would probably start small and then we would, you know, could add folks on over, over time. And some folks may drop out as, as the case may be. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Secretary French and then Kim.
Yeah, thanks. I'm thinking this would be a public body and subject to open meeting law requirements and so forth. So, you know, just alert you, we have restraints on our resources. So we would expect this, you know, we certainly could handle warning the agendas and posting minutes, but we would expect the group to take its own minutes and so forth and pass them along.
Yep. No, totally understood. Kim.
And how will people be appointed to this or apply if they are interested in being appointed? And is there a board member from this board that either liaisons with that group? Or how does that relationship work?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, I mean, our practice has always been that the chair appoints members to committees. So I would expect it would be, you know, a similar, similar process. At this point, you know, I don't, we may want to appoint a board member to be a liaison. I think that's a good idea, although, you know, this is a public body, so anybody can attend at any, any time. But I, I really want to put more emphasis on, you know, this being a, a committee of practitioners. And I think that's, that's most important. Patrick.
So I was thinking maybe we should have a diversity of members. And that includes also maybe one or two students, a couple of, a couple of parents. You know, just think broadly of the composition of the group. So that we can have inclusive voices.
No, I think that's, that's a great point. So the only, so let's, yeah, let's, I think that we could definitely look to incorporate that. I do want to be a little bit careful that we think about this group as really focused on sort of the, the nuts and bolts of the implementation. I don't want this to, and I don't want to set the expectation that this is going to be a group looking at broader policy issues. Yeah, really kind of nuts on the bolts, like, you know, and, and coming back to the discussions that, you know, Jennifer's committee had about, you know, thinking through, like, how does this process work? Was very sort of, you know, theoretical. But then when you get into the actual practice, you realize like, hey, that doesn't work or this is a better way to do it. So that I think is going to be more of the focus of, of this group. Kim.
Thanks, Oliver. That's a really helpful framing. Because I was thinking about the lengthy and really thoughtful process of the policy decisions that happened, taking the legislation and, and creating the rules out of it, the regulatory framework out of it. So I think this will provide really valuable feedback for potential technical corrections. But I would not envision it to be offering fundamental policy changes as I see it. So, okay, thank you. That's so helpful to clarify.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is more like, hey, we, we set up this process that goes from A to B, but we didn't think that, you know, we need to, you know, do something. Yeah. So, yeah. Okay. So at this time, I'd invite a motion to establish said committee. Jennifer.
Thanks. All right. I'll do my best. I move that the board establish a 2200 review commission and delegate to the chair the authority to appoint members to that commission.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Tammy Colby. Is there any further discussion? Already hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand?
Yes, yes.
Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand? Any abstentions? The motion appears to pass unanimously. The motion has carried unanimously. Thank you for establishing that. So we're on the item M. And if absent objection, I'm going to sort of combine M and O, which is the retreat planning and agenda and, and work plan. So if we could talk a little bit about, I guess we'll start with a retreat and maybe work our way back. So on the, the retreat, you know, I'm sort of thinking May, late May, early June timeframe. Does that generally make sense to folks?
It depends. That's graduation season here.
When is graduation?
I will tell you. I believe it's June 6th.
June 6th, okay. So perhaps if we were to target, like, say, the, the last week of May? When is Memorial Day, by the way? Does anybody know?
The 30th.
Okay. So if we, yeah, so say the week of May 23rd. Now we can nail down, but I'm not hearing any real objections. So if, if you don't mind, just sort of pencil that in, we'll, we'll start getting some doodle pulls out for that week.
How, how many days are we, what's the timeframe for this, Oliver? It doesn't, we're still in, this is the last, that would be the last week of, uh, classes, exams and so forth for us.
That's a good question. Historically, our retreats pre-pandemic were, you know, a day and a half, two days. You know, we don't necessarily need to do that, but I, I would say no more than two days. Kim.
I'm just looking at the schedule of our meeting, that month is the 18th. I know we have in the past, well, I should say, maybe the one time we had a retreat in person. In my tenure on this board, we were at Lake Maury, did our meeting first and then and overnight and the remainder, part of the retreat beginning of the end of the first day and the second part, the beginning of the second day. So just a reminder of past practice. And I don't know if that week or any time surrounding the 18th is an option for folks.
Any, any thoughts on that? So if the 18th, that's a Wednesday.
That's the week before graduation at UVM. So for me, at least earlier in the week, I don't know if anybody else is tied up with that. But that is graduate, that is graduation week at UVM.
I wonder, not, not to problem solve in this moment, but 17th, 18th, what might be interesting is if our retreat work actually came ahead of our board meeting, we may have some information to share out in the, in the, like, sort of a retreat update that we could share in the public meeting, the more public part of the meeting on the 18th. And that leans us towards the beginning of the week. Honestly, I'm not even sure that, you know, just as a thought.
Okay. So, so 17th for the retreat and then over, and then the 18th for our regular board meeting? Okay. Any objections to that? Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Well, let's take that one offline and, and try to sort of narrow down to those dates offline. We can get some doodle pulls out, et cetera. So. Okay. As far as major themes, not looking to set the agenda, but just sort of major themes, topics that we want to that we want to address um at the um at that. Obviously, input that we can gather from this public engagement process is, I think, definitely high in that that list. Um, so Jenna and and Patrick, um, now you've got some sort of dates to, you know, potentially work into here. Any other um? Any other uh major themes?
Would you be including in that, Oliver, what Tammy suggested, I think, which was the the overall um visioning, how are we going to vision, how are we going to set that up as a process?
Yes, that's a good one. So not not looking to establish the vision at the meeting. But what's the process that's, you know, that's it's sort of the the evolution of the state board and how it it sets the the vision. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Tammy, does that compute? Okay, um, Kim.
I think it would be a great opportunity for us to um think about our own governance practices. Sort of onboarding, um mentoring or whatever that looks like for us. That would also allow us to create some expectations around our public engagement that that allows for a strategic way to look at it. So that the tactics that we use to get there fit within this broader goal of our public engagement responsibility. But if we unpacked like the roles and responsibilities and make that governance policy-esque so that we have expectations that are sustainable beyond the personalities seated at the table and and allow for a good structure and succession planning, et cetera, that would be great.
Yep. Yeah, and actually, um, I think the the governance process in general, and I think all the topics you've mentioned, um, yeah, make 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 a lot of sense. And then um, there was something else. Um, oh, yes, that triggered a thought process. The um, we'll we'll have a sense after the legislative session. May not be concluded at that point, but should be nearing completion. We'll have a sense for where things will evolve based on the roles and responsibilities report. So that'll sort of inform some of that as well.
Is that also, Oliver, where things like our board development might live in that type of conversation? Or standards or expectations around that?
Yep, yep. Jennifer.
So as we're thinking about dates, um, is the expectation that our student members will also be joining us? And if so, I'm just kind of wondering how these dates at the end of May, leading into their own final season, fits them.
Great, great question. Um, because, yeah, the terms. That's right around the, when uh on Halita, you'll be rolling off the board in June, right? Okay, so we won't have a new board member, but so this will be actually our opportunity to wish you uh wish you well into your next uh your next adventure. But how does that, uh, Jennifer's question, you know, that timing um on Halita? And I I think Gabrielle had to leave, but how does that work from a student perspective?
Um. I, it should work fine. Um, scheduling for me is wonky because signing up for SATs now. So I'm figuring that out. Um, and I have AP exams and I don't know when those are. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay.
It could, it could run up against AP exams, depending on which ones you take. That's the AP exam season.
Yeah, um. I I think they um happen within like the span of two weeks, like each day is a different class.
Yep.
But I think it's within the first two weeks. So.
I just looked in there, done the thirteenth.
Okay. I'll probably be burnt out, but aside from that, I think I'll be okay.
Yeah.
Ah, Gabrielle, you you are with us. Good. Gabrielle, we can't hear you. I think you might be trying to say something. You're on mute.
Sorry, it takes a really long time for it to come off. Anyways, yeah, I was still here. It's just teams wanted me to have my video off because I was having some technical difficulties. Um. What are the, like, do we have the date set in stone? Because like on Halita said, I have like exams too, like with AP exams, they're like May, there's like May thirteenth, and then there's another one, like there are a few days apart. I'm, I'm not entirely sure just because of the whole exam and like testing season. But I think it'll, I think it'll be fine.
Okay.
Depending on the exact dates and stuff.
So so right now, uh, I'll just say, right now, we're looking at sort of the seventeenth and eighteenth as kind of our preferred dates. Um, and if if need be, we can explore the twenty-third. So why, everybody can go back, start look, checking your calendars and and seeing if um if you foresee any conflicts. And if so, we can, we can see what we might work into the week of the twenty-third. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Other um, other m- major um themes. I think one thing I want to make sure that we do cover off um is from a DEI uh perspective, um, you know, I I want to make sure that we uh we spend some time there. And, you know, mindful of the fact that we will have, hopefully, next month at our April meeting. We're going to have the initial presentation from the Act One Advisory Group. And what's what's going on from there. And and I think, you know, it's it's going to take a couple of months just for the board to get its arms around that. But I think uh it would be really helpful to have some some time set aside for um, you know, DEI in general and more specifically, you know, sort of our vision for where we're going to take that with 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 an EQS. Does that makes make sense? Okay, uh, Patrick, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, I um, it's been for a while. I I was going to add that as soon as we can settle on a date, equally important is to identify a location for the retreat.
Yeah. Um, so I will take that away and I'll work with um Maureen and Suzanne to see what our options are in that. Lyle.
Dan meets patiently with us every time. And I'm wondering, Dan, if you think there's something that this board should be considering at a retreat.
Yeah, you threw me on the patient thing, but um, yeah, certainly, I'd be happy to. I think it is important to, you know, as we struggle constantly with the coherence issues, to situate whatever you're doing in the context of everything else that's going on. So I'll be happy to participate in that regard.
Okay. Excellent. Um, all righty, well, this is not, this isn't a set in stone, but these, at least we'll um, we'll continue to noodle on this over our next few meetings, but at least I think we've got a a high level structure. Um, so transitioning into April. So I do see our April agenda is uh is filling up. So what I'm foreseeing at this moment right now is we're going to at least have a preliminary uh dec- discussion with with Lincoln, uh, as you heard earlier. Um, you know, that that's going to be really a little bit complicated because they they're eager to move that process forward. I think under current law, but we also in parallel have, you know, um, a bill working its way through the legislature, which may alter how that moves forward, further complicated by there's a vision that's sort of developing between Lincoln and Ripton around creating a new supervisory union. So a a very complex um process with a lot of um kind of shifting um, uh, with the ground sort of shifting underneath us. So we'll have some preliminary discussion at the very least uh with with Lincoln and a presentation from them. Uh, we also have the um, uh, it sounds based on Tom's earlier report back from his committee. We'll have a um, we'll, we'll need to spend a healthy amount of time kind of reviewing uh a number of recommendations that will be coming out of uh Tom's Committee on Independent School um approvals. Um, and then the other significant um event is around the Act One uh presentation that has, that was originally going to be presented in December, and there have been a a number of delays in that process. But my understanding is that they will be voting on Thursday on a final dra- draft uh proposal to bring to us. Um, so assuming that goes to plan, uh, I am planning and I have been in communication with the Chair of the Act One Advisory Group. I do anticipate that coming before us in in April. Um, so we want to make sure that we set aside some quality uh time for that. And then um, and then Kim and Patrick, uh, I know Patrick, you mentioned uh CVU to uh potentially coming in to do a presentation on their DEI initiatives. Um, and then um, I don't know if we want to do this in April because I I'm seeing the agenda already filling up, but I know, Kim, you are going to be teeing up another unified district to come and 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 sort of present their their lessons learned from their unification process.
But it does sound as though i- if I'm targeting May, that's helpful to know. It's also fine if it's April. I just, it's helpful in reaching out to give them a timeline.
Yeah.
If you think it's more likely May, Oliver, then I'll, I'll reach out with that in mind.
I'm I'm thinking, just as I'm sort of planning mentally, unless we want to go back to full day meetings. I I see a morning uh meeting getting filled up here pretty quickly.
So in the case of CVU, CVU, Adam Bonting, there's some flexibility, so I'll take my cue.
Okay. Okay, right now, let's say, let's pencil it in for um uh for April.
Okay.
And then i- if need be, but I I think we've got a pretty full agenda for for April.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, so I think the final item then uh is on professional uh development for the state board. Um, so wanted to get your thoughts uh on, you know, some uh both some topics that we think would be really helpful from a a professional development perspective. And then also uh looking for someone um, you know, to to take the lead on um, you know, sort of advancing these. And and they don't all, there could be a few different things with a few different people perhaps taking a lead. And we could stagger this out um to start getting these um on future, um, you know, board agendas. And 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 also may not need to be delivered in a board setting, right? So if we're just, if there's going to be professional development where there's no board business, um, you know, that that could be handled outside of our regular meetings as well. So just want to get some high-level thoughts on on structure approach. Um, who might be willing to sort of take the lead on some of these things and what we think would be good topics for professional development? Nope. I know some of you have some ideas.
So, Chair Olson.
Yes.
Would this include um uh having speakers, external speakers?
Yes, yes, yep. And you don't all have to answer now. I uh, if you want, we can, we can circle back and and uh put this on the agenda for our next meeting. Give you all some time to think about it, but I I I really want the board to be thinking about, you know, what you all as individuals would be really interested in learning more about and and also at the same time, things that you think the board is as a whole would really benefit from. Um, and if if you want to think about that and come back at our next meeting, we can take it up then. Kim.
Thanks. I was just thinking, we may have a better sense as well, once we've received the EQS proposed updates to just have a better sense of how we, what we would do well to learn in approaching that. So that might help define um some of the the learning we think we need to do as a group collectively. And then I think it would be great if we, somewhere along the line, as we're thinking about all of this um, almost have, as you get as a school board member, your um roles and responsibilities sort of a a book almost that helps an onboard and and bring people up to the speed. It can be somewhat overwhelming early on, as I remembered, on this board, despite other board service and other boards. It's, this is just a different body. And I bet that as we think about all of this through the lens of roles and responsibilities, we could put together some sort of helpful manual.
Okay. Well, we'll circle back to this at our um next meeting then. If you could all go away as a little homework assignment and and think about this. Um, and then, then finally, I I uh just on the sort of a agenda planning. I was at a meeting recently and, you know, we've always had the practice of having um setting aside time for public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And I had some experience recently with a board that had set aside time for public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. And I thought it was a kind of an interesting approach because it provides an opportunity for members of the public to provide input and sort of advocacy at the beginning, but then also time at the end for, you know, sort of reflection uh on on board actions. And I'm um, I I I really liked uh that as an approach. And I I wanted to s- uh us to think about whether, you know, I I wanted to get your input and see if if you thought that that might be a good approach. Um, Jennifer and then Kim.
That's how our school board does it, and um it has been really helpful in the past, just to like have the bookends, both at the beginning and at the end. So I would be in favor of that.
Okay, Kim and then Tom.
Um, in my time in EWSD, we did that for a couple of meetings. Um, I think possibly reflective of the time we were in and the environment. It um, we didn't end up sticking with that simply because um it ended up with a lot of time at an end of a meeting that probably was not as productive as um taking away the sort of the content of the meeting. So uh, we did make a practice of if there were public, before we voted on items, after the board had had their discussion. If there were um, you know, limited comments at that time, we took it on action items. I just, I thought it was a great idea too, I think, in those moments. Um, so if we are interested in being flexible and trying different strategies, I I love that idea. I thought it was a great idea. In practice, it ended up being, I think, less productive than we thought it might be. And again, might have been the environment and the time.
And we can always change. Tom.
Yeah, my comment was along those lines is that um, I think it would have to be um limited and really well structured, or it could go on for for a long time. Um, and I'm also wondering what, because obvious to me what we would do with public comment at the beginning of the meeting on agenda items to come. But I wonder what uh we would do with information that we got at the end of the meeting. Uh, would there be an expectation that there'd be further discussion? Or will we simply taking that feedback um and entering it into the uh to the minutes?
Yeah, it's a good, good question, Tom. And always with any public comment, I I've always been really careful. And then my predecessor's always that we have um, we have time, we we, it's time bound, right? So when we we say, you know, whatever time we set aside, whether it's ten minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever. That's why I always ask, you know, who who wants to speak first, right? To get a sense of how many people want to speak. And then if there are a lot of people want to speak, we we limit their time accordingly to fit in that slot. And I would expect we would do the same thing at the end. Um, we typically don't have a tremendous amount of public comment, um, but we do. And it, and then as far as expectations go, you know, there are never any expectations, just, you know, it's it's that. It's public comment, it's an opportunity to provide input, and it's up to us as as board members to process that input and use that to influence our 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 thinking uh on a, on the issues at hand or how we, what we may want to take up at a future time. Um, so do we want to give it a, give it a, you know, give it a try or um? Okay. We'll give it a try, and again, if if for some reason we find it's not effective, we can, we can, uh, we can always remove it. And and again, the key thing is it, it's always going to be time bound, so. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Um, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, uh, Patrick.
Yes, I, so we've been meeting virtually. Any idea if and when we'll return to in-person? Because I think that would be a great thing since I'm not sure everybody on the board knows each other. knows each other on, in person, has ever met in person. You know, that'd certainly help.
So my suggestion is that we use the retreat as kind of our first, um, opportunity, and then let's assess then. And I think what we had discussed in the past was perhaps alternating because there's value in meeting in person, but I think we found that there's actually a lot more public participation and we're much more accessible when we're virtual.
Okay.
But so I think let's, you know, we're, we're going to be targeting the, the, the retreat and assuming we have a combined regular meeting at that time as kind of our first in-person meeting. Um, and then let's have that actually as an, an agenda topic, um, to see if we want to move forward with all in-person, all virtual, or, or some al- alternating version of that. Kim.
The hybrid is hard, just as a warning to all of us. I'm sure we've experienced it in meetings. And I know that's the way the legislature is, but I do think though, it would be unfortunate to go back on not allowing this type of virtual participation, either if a board member is unable otherwise to make it, or more importantly, I think if the public, I mean, not that it's not important that we all make it, but I think if we're planning and carving out a few times a year that we're meeting in person, we can probably do that. I think it would be unfortunate to lose the virtual participation opportunity, even when we are meeting in person for those who might wish to, um, to speak and be heard by this board. So I challenge us to figure that out. It's hard in an environment where we are not, where it may not already be set up for it. And I think that's something to consider in thinking about our retreat.
Excellent. Okay. Um, so is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Kim. So I'll take, uh, Jennifer, your hand as a second. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning, please, uh, signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please signify by saying, uh, no and raising your hand. All righty, uh, it appears the, that, uh, we have unanimous approval to adjourn. So thank you all, as always, for your time today and, uh, look forward to our next meeting.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great time.
Thank you.